This formal meeting of the Board of Education for April 28, 2015 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. And the meeting is also being streamed live on the PPS TV service's website. Directors Knowles and Curler are absent this evening. So, tonight we get to begin by honoring three of our outstanding career learning partners. So, I'd like to invite up Andre Jackson, our Partner Development Senior Manager, to talk about the recognition event tonight, and I'm not seeing Andre. Oh, here comes Lorenzo Poe. Thank you, Mr. Poe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Smith, Lorenzo Poe. Again, tonight is one of our quarterly opportunities to recognize several of the many outstanding partners or volunteers who contribute so much time, energy, resources to the educational mission of our district. So, tonight it is that opportunity for us to truly recognize a partner in a partnership that has done much for the district. So, with that, let me introduce, bring up our Assistant Superintendent for School Performance, Mr. Antonio Lopez, who will introduce to you the partners who we're recognizing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Antonio Lopez, Assistant Superintendent for the Office School Performance, Chair Atkins, Director Student Representative and Superintendent. This year, we have seen the continued growth of state-approved CTE programs to start in our schools. By the end of this year, every campus will have at least one state-approved CTE program. We will have added 15 additional state-approved CTE programs, bringing the total number of state-approved CTE programs to 44. As context, two years ago, we had 19 state-approved CTE programs. We have more than doubled our big CTE offerings, so we're very proud of that. We know that we still have a lot of more work to do. Collaboration with industries and professionals is a core component of these career-learning CTE programs to study. These partnerships serve as a resource, offer guidance, advice, and support, and most importantly, help PPS to provide tangible, real-world career exploration and CTE opportunities for our students. Done well, they can be a winning experience for everyone. Tonight, we recognize three exemplary organizations that do this work very, very well. Through their efforts over the past 10 years, thousands of PPS students have experienced career awareness, exploration, and preparation, and benefited from the time, talent, and expertise of hundreds of industry and community partners. We are pleased to publicly recognize and thank them for all they have done to support CTE and career learning in Portland Public Schools. It is now my pleasure to introduce Jeannie Yarkovich, Senior Manager Career Pathways and CTE. She will introduce today's honorees.
Thank you, Antonio. So, good evening, Board and Superintendent Smith. I am very excited to be here tonight to recognize three of our key partners in career learning and CTE. We start with the Portland Workforce Alliance. We have been partnering with PWA for over the past 10 years. They've been with us since the beginning. From Career Day events, guest speakers, there's a youth apprenticeship program. They work with teachers. They work with our central office to develop innovative and engaging activities. And then, there's their signature event, the Northwest Youth Careers Expo. PWA has positively impacted the development and expansion of career learning and CTE in PPS. Tonight, I'd like to acknowledge first the work of Executive Director Kevin Jean Scale and his amazing staff, Susan Nielsen and Kristin Kohashi. Susan and Kevin are in the room. Central to the success is the Volunteer Board of Directors. They bring passion, experience, technical skills, and a willingness to make the ask of anyone to support our efforts. And by the way, they all have day jobs, so this is in addition to what they actually do. And we have quite a few members of the board in attendance, and I just would like for them to stand and be acknowledged tonight. So, PWA Board. So, with that, I would like you to hear a little bit about PWA from their president-elect, Scott Kleiner from Wyden &amp; Kennedy. And Scott will come down and join us here.
Hi, thanks, Jeannie. Thanks. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Carroll. I am Scott Kleiner. Well, this is a great introduction. Covered half of my presentation, which is a good thing tonight. I'm Scott Kleiner. I work at Wyden &amp; Kennedy. I am the incoming president for the Portland Workforce Alliance. The Portland Workforce Alliance mission is to kind of create enduring partnerships between schools and local businesses and create a little more relevance for students' education. I wanted to start, make sure my buttons work, to thank you first. Instead of thanking you at the end, we'll thank you first for continued support around career technical education. We get pretty excited about this, and the reason we want to thank you is we get comments like this from students all the time. So, this career day has given me more hope from a student that went to a Nike Career You probably know a little bit about us already, and we're going to start with that. We're kind of known as the Expo people. So, we put on this sort of our signature event as an expo that we do every year. This year, we served close to 6,000 students. There were 70 schools in attendance. Half of the schools were Portland Public Schools. We have over 130 exhibitors that present at the expo. We had a large chunk from healthcare and technology. Those segments are growing this year. And we also have really great involvement from construction, manufacturing, emergency services, and arts and design. We also, at our expo, do close to 1,000, or this year, we did close to 1,000 mock interviews. Students get to practice interviewing as well as getting some feedback. That's through a close partnership with Portland HR Association, Firma. And it's a tremendous, very well-run machine to get students in and out and get some experience, real-world experience for what an interview would look like. What you might not know about us, the Portland Workforce Alliance this year, is we help serve your students year-round. We're able to do that because we are connected to the region's top employers. We have a great amount of folks that are on our board that represent this. And it's through a lot of our staff and the board's close relationships that we're allowed to make partnerships with, you know, the companies that are listed up here. We're also connected to the CTE revitalization ongoings that are happening right now. We've had examples where we've had teachers come and learn about engineering and healthcare and figure out ways to bring back the industry into their classrooms, so it's real-world experience for the staff as well. And because of the volunteer, we're a small, sort of nimble organization that has just three staff, but those staff add on 20 board members. And if you add on the 770 volunteers, it brings quite an overwhelming amount of folks that can help kind of support our mission and how do we serve the students. Because of all this volunteer time, we are allowed to do quite a lot of good work on a pretty small budget. We do have a contract with Portland Public Schools, and we do get office space, and we appreciate that consistent relationship that we've had. Today, we've got tons of business partners that come back. So, we've been doing this partnership between Portland Public and PWA's been, like Jeannie said, about 10 years. And our partners stick with it, so we have a lot of partners that come back and do experiences for students year after year. We also have lots of new people joining in. So, eBay and Microsoft have moved into the Portland area, Elemental Technologies, Zeebus, or a lot of these are in sort of the growing sectors of healthcare and technology, which is great. Kind of leads to the question, so what motivates all these companies to get involved? And why do people on the PWA and our board of 20 people and the time that they put into it, like what motivates that? It all comes to your students. So, it's students like this that we want to focus on. We try and collect, you know, as many experiences as we can for your students. We do have a focus on students that don't have as many opportunities or have an economic status that doesn't, isn't their greatest setup and they don't have the easiest access to businesses and transportation. So, we have a focus like that that mirrors the district. And we have great stories. This is the story of Skylar Williams, who is planning to attend a four-year university. And he has outrightly said that the experiences he's had with Portland Workforce Alliance, which include the PWA Summer Construction Camp and a few career days, helped him figure out what his college plan was. We're also really motivated by what students say around our career days. So, just a couple of quick quotes. Very informative and engaging. It showed me how many paths you can take in college. These are kind of things that we collect at the end of our career days. We get more and more positive affirmation on what students say after every career day, showing that it does make an impact. Students are really hungry for experiences like that. And another, again, another quote, "When you go off campus and see things, it's a totally different experience." So, they go back to the classroom with a more clear sense on what they're learning in class and how that relates to future work. We have, again, stories upon stories, students upon students that have this. We've partnered with a lot of the career coordinators. Raquel here is here tonight in support of our mission on how do we help create these relationships. And those, again, connected and personal relationships that we have in the buildings help create better experiences for students. So, clearly, the work is growing. There's a lot of effort and money and time put behind it at the district. So, PWA is growing. You can see that our expo has a ton of support from Portland Public School students. Our career days and sort of our in-depth experiences are focused on a lot of Portland Public School students. We've had great conversations this year with Jeannie and Shay around how can we create more in-depth experiences for Portland Public Schools so that the relevance is even closer. We're looking forward to planning more with them, and we want to make sure that we keep it going. So, I just want to, again, thank you for your commitment and time and energy behind this, and we stand ready to help and keep moving forward. Thank you.
I believe we have, do you want to go ahead and do, we have a plaque?
Do we do the?
Yeah, so let's go ahead.
Superintendent Smith, if you could read the plaque. Thank you so much for that presentation, and then we'll do a little photo op with you, and the plaque would be great.
And actually, I'll just add one more thing is we have consistently said we've been in partnership with the Workforce Alliance since it was small and since we were really unable to do a lot of the experiences that Workforce Alliance has allowed us to do for our students. And we've been building the capacity to be a partner by adding career coordinators in all of our schools. You guys have just grown exponentially in terms of what you make available to our students. That's just been phenomenal. So, I just want to say really a heartfelt thanks to all of you who spend your time and energy growing these opportunities for our kids. It's been remarkable. So, this plaque presented to the Portland Workforce Alliance in recognition and appreciation of your contributions to the students and staff of Portland Public Schools, April 28, 2015. And we're going to ask you to come on up for a photograph. Is that, we're doing these as we go here.
You know, Director Morton was just suggesting we could do sort of the photographs all one after the other.
And that would be great, too.
And just get up once.
Okay.
So, we'll hold that thought, and we've got two more awesome partners. You will get your plaque and your photo, which we know.
Good idea.
Thank you so much. Next awesome partner.
All right. So, the next partner to be recognized is the ACE Mentor Program. So, what I'm going to tell you is that about nine years ago, the founding chair, Ed Dean, came to Benson High School where our offices were, and met with Kevin Jean Scale and myself, and talked about this idea, this program that he had seen nationally focused on architecture, construction management, and engineering. And I have to tell you that I was skeptical. He talked about a 12-week after-school program, and I thought, well, we don't really have classes. At that time, we didn't have our career coordinators. I just thought, well, okay, but let's try it. So, the first year, I think our target was 30 students from Portland Public Schools. I think we ended up with somewhere in the 20, early 20, 21 kids. What I'll tell you is that I was wrong, and this year, we had over 160 applications, and I believe they took about 150 students, primarily from Portland Public Schools, but also from across the region. The mentoring in the ACE program, there are about 70-plus mentors, so the ratio is two students to one mentor. It's amazing. They raise funds for scholarships, and it's, the model is an exemplary model, this whole idea of providing students an opportunity after school to do something that we may not be able to offer during the school day. And so, we have replicated that several times. Early on, we did it with Mercy Corps. We are currently doing a program called PACE, which is really with the construction, electrical, and sheet metal workers, and we're using our facilities downstairs in the carpentry shop to make that happen. So, it's win-win all the way around. So, again, I want to acknowledge the work of their Executive Director, Kevin Jean Scale, and his staff, Kristin Kohashi and Susan Nielsen. They are a small but mighty team that do a lot of work both with Portland Workforce Alliance and the ACE Mentor Program. We also need to talk about, again, this, they have another amazing Volunteer Board of Directors who also bring their passion and their technical skills. They make the ask. They are fundraising, and I'm not, do we have board members in attendance from ACE? So, if the board members from ACE would stand and be recognized, that would be great. So, now, I'd like to invite Board Chair Michelle Schultz from GBD Architects and student Antonio Krauser from Franklin to come forward and talk a little bit about ACE Mentor Program.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeannie, for the introduction, and thank you to the Board and Superintendent Smith for allowing us to speak to you today. So, as Jeannie said, my name is Michelle Schultz. I work with GBD Architects. I'm an architect, but I'm also the Board Chair for the ACE Mentorship Program. So, obviously, I'm here today to chat with you a little bit about our program. Jeannie gave you a little bit of an oversight, which was great. We have been at this for the last nine years. We are wrapping up our eighth year with students here in the end of May. So, I'll talk to you a little bit about how that system works. As Jeannie said, it was a little bit of a trial by error the, you know, first year we were out, but we definitely have figured it out. So, the one big thing that we've learned is that, as PWA talked about, the opportunity of students to be able to actually get out there and see the environment where we work is just such a great experience for them. Many of the students our first year had actually never been in professional offices. So, our program, the way that it's built is, it's, as Jeannie indicated, it's 12 weeks. So, it's two hours a session over the course of about 24 weeks. It's kind of every other week. They set up, and they're set up in teams. They're assigned mentors to those teams, and as Jeannie indicated, it's typically two mentors, two to three mentors per student. And they actually go physically to different offices. So, they may meet at KPFF Structural Engineers one week, and the next week, they're at GLUMAC Engineering, and then they're at GBD's offices. So, they're actually able to see different environments. So, it gives them a chance to see different, different ways that people work. It also allows them the ability to work as teams, and that's really something that I think our industry is very big on, and so trying to help them see that. The way the sessions are set up is that they really actually take a design project just like we would from start to finish. The first session, they meet out at a site. They evaluate the site, the context, just like any professional would do, and then they take it through the process from the infancy of design. They're given a program. They work with each other to try and collaborate and come up with a design for a building as a team. And these are students from various high schools. We try to mix up the high schools, so they're not with their buddy that, you know, they're with every single day of the week. These are strangers to them. It's really exciting to see that these students are very, very quiet the first couple of weeks, and then all of a sudden, by the third and fourth week, they're best buddies and "Look at what I did this week! It's so great!" You know, they, they just get to know each other. So, it's been a great collaborative environment for them. It also gives them a chance to present in front of people. So, we've created a midterm presentation where they have to present to their peers. So, they have to tell people how they've gotten to the design that they've gotten to, how they're going to progress their design, the different ideas that they've taken, this year's project. There's four different projects for them to choose from. They're designing a community pool, an electrical car dealership, a movie theater, and a neighborhood market. So, they're able to talk to each other about kind of different ideas of why the site is better for different types of buildings. It's really created an interactive environment for them to be able to discuss, present. At the end of everything, when they're wrapping up their final designs and putting together these boards and renderings, they also have to get up in front of their parents, their teachers, all of the ACE community, and they present their final design. So, in a kind of intimidating amphitheater environment with PowerPoint and everything, they're up there presenting. So, it kind of takes them full circle. They get the experience of all of the aspects of what we do. So, they really get to learn what does a structural engineer do every day of the week? What does an architect do every day of the week? And apply, wow, you know, math is really important. I better study. And Jeannie talked about the growth of the program. Yeah, so we started with 27 students. That first year, I started as a mentor. We were one of 28 mentors, and like I said, we kind of weren't really sure how this whole thing was going to work, but we were going to make it work. And apparently, we did. We have 148 students currently enrolled in the program, 102 mentors this year. So, it's been a great success. And PPS has been a huge partner in that. The career coordinator positions have helped us grow exponentially. Outreach to students is our biggest challenge. We just, it's hard to get into schools and actually talk about our program, and it's our goal that any student that is interested in these professions has the ability to learn about them, but we just have to be able to tell them what we do. So, you guys have been strategic in really helping us have that opportunity. So, almost 50% of our students this year are from Portland Public Schools. And one of the things that we've really targeted in the last couple of years in some of our discussions, actually, with your team, is how do we target those students that are more in need than others? And so, we've made a concerted effort to try to find the higher poverty schools and really make a concerted effort to have outreach. So, we are sending our board members, our mentors, our previous ACE students out to the schools early in the year to talk to them about ACE and make sure that all of the schools know that this is a program and an opportunity. We've taken away roadblocks. We've talked to them about their, we provide pizza at all of their sessions. So, they get food, you know, which is, for some students, actually a motivator. We provide bus passes for those students to make sure that they can come to those sessions. So, we do what we can to make sure that that opportunity is available to all students. And we've had great success. We actually have, 60% of our students are of color currently. And as we talked about, it takes, it takes a large community to create programs like this. This is a list of our board members, and I won't go through everybody here, but we have a lot of large firms in the AEC industry that are part of our board. And beyond this, we have a huge list of mentor support for firms that also provide volunteer support to the ACE Mentorship Program. Jeannie Yarkovich is also a member of our board, so she didn't, I don't think, stand up when she recognized, but she should definitely be recognized for her support of the ACE And another big piece that Jeannie mentioned is our ability to help take those students and help them get into college. So, we have a big piece of what we do is a fundraiser. We actually just had our luncheon last week, raised over $100,000 for scholarships for students. So, over the years, we've given $248,000 in scholarships. We hope to give probably over $56,000 this year in scholarships. So, that's been a big, big piece of why ACE was founded. It's not only teaching them about the programs, but helping them get there. One of our board members, Jim Hook from PSU, who's in the audience today, some of our partnerships with the college institutions has been strategic as well in helping us be able to go to the, take the students to those colleges. They've had tours of the program, so they're able to actually walk through the architecture program, walk through the engineering program, and see what it's really like to be in college in those programs. So, a big shout-out to Jim for his help. And like I just talked about, a lot of our funding is actually from private funding. So, it's that ability to have the fundraising luncheon and a golf tournament that we've created to be able to have support for the programs. Most of what we do is based on that support. We have 5% grant funding. We really appreciate those grants, but we don't rely on those grants. We rely on our community. So, it's all of our volunteers and our fundraising efforts that support the program. And one thing that's been very exciting for me, kind of watching the program come full circle. So, now that we've had eight years of ACE students, we obviously have students that have successfully graduated from high school, have gone on to college, and are now graduating from college and coming back into the community. So, Abby Kridlin is a perfect example. I actually interviewed with her in my office three weeks ago. She graduates this June, and she's out looking for a job. So, it's pretty exciting to see these students grow from coming into the program not knowing what a scale was to having these amazing portfolios and experience to actually come in and join our workforce. And that's why, as our board partners, that's why we do what we do, is to help motivate students to do what we do and join us. So, she's been a great example of that. And Antonio is going to be the star of the show because he's actually been an ACE student, and this is his third year in the program. So, he's going to talk to you a little bit about his experience. Antonio is actually going to be going to PSU and studying architecture here in the fall. He will be a first-generation college student. So, yeah. So, this is Antonio Corsiere from Franklin High School.
Hello. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Carroll Smith. My name is Antonio Krauser, and yes, I go to Franklin High School. I'm in the 12th grade. I've been doing this program for three years, and I feel that it's actually a very valuable program for, or thing in part of my life, I should say, because when I was in high school, we had, it was during a lot of time of budget cuts, so I didn't really get to take that many electives. And I feel that ACE kind of filled that, that void of, you know, what do I want to do with my education? Because it was, you know, when you're in school, all you get really is your core classes and, you know, what I feel that ACE did for me is that it provided me with that insight to what I could be doing in the future. And so, I would say that overall, I keep coming back every single year because I always learn something new. The first year, I was really learning how to work with others and also how to work actually professionally, I could say, because I'm used to, I was used to being alone my whole life. And so, I feel that over the years, I've also developed better social skills. I've also developed better public speaking skills, and I've also developed, actually, a great deal of working off of everybody's minds, basically. I've been able to use, especially this year, I've been able to use a lot of my peers to build a greater project and to help develop better ideas that we could use and we could apply to our, we're designing a pool this year, so to our public pool. And so, yeah. And in the fall, I do plan on attending PSU, study architecture, and I feel that it's also the door that ACE opened for me was that it showed me that college isn't actually that far away. It showed me that it was pretty close around the corner. So, I had to really start focusing on school and start challenging myself, which I actually did my junior and senior year, which I've taken six, eight of the classes so far. So, I feel that overall, ACE really did help me become a better student and a better worker, not only for school, but for my entire life.
So, a big thank you for, Antonio, for getting up here and talking. It's a little intimidating, in front of everybody. A thank you to you guys for supporting the career coordinator program and supporting, thus supporting our program. We really appreciate all that you've done. I'd like to also, a quick thank you to Raquel Lays because she is the career coordinator that encouraged Antonio to get started in the program and made, obviously, a huge difference in his life and has made a huge difference on the ACE program as having him as a student. So, thank you to everybody for listening, and thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, tonight, we're also going to recognize work systems. We partner with work systems in a variety of ways. They partner quite a bit with multiple pathways, but tonight, I'm going to focus a little bit more on the work that they do with us in terms of career learning and CTE. There are multiple things that they do with us. We have BizConnect, which is our employer database tool that, it's kind of, I call it a rolodex of warm leads. These are people that have volunteered to work with students in our schools. Next year, we are transitioning to a new system called Oregon Connections, and they are connected to the Portland Metro STEM partnership. So, I see this So, I see this as becoming an even more viable tool for us. We work with Work Systems to focus on specific areas. And so, currently, I'm partnering with them in the area of manufacturing. Manufacturing Day was held last summer, and I, someone from this district, I don't think it was you, Carol, who participated and went and visited different manufacturing companies. We also partnered last summer with Work Systems on the Summer Works program, which is paid jobs, paid internships for our students. Last year, 220 Portland Public School students were Summer Works interns across the city and the county. Of those, 25 were interns here at the BESC, both in our operations and education departments. And that's the first time we've done that here. We are in the process of recruiting now for Summer Works next year, and we're on track. Right now, we have at least 32 interns who will be here in the building, and we're hoping that we'll have a few more in addition to the opportunities that are available to our students across the city. So, it's a win-win, and it's the first paid job for many of our students. There are wraparound supports that Work Systems provides in terms of work readiness, training, financial literacy, and the opportunity to network with employers. And so, with that, I'd like to invite Andrew McGough, who's the Executive Director, and Heather Fick, the Director of Youth Workforce Services, to come forward and say a few words.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Smith. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'm Andrew McGough. I'm the Executive Director of Work Systems. We're the Workforce Development Board for the City of Portland, Washington, and Montezuma Counties. And what we do really is pursue and invest resources to improve the quality of the workforce in the region. So, we obviously have a very deep interest in the emergent working, or the emergent workforce. And as such, since the beginning of our history, which is 1998, we've invested about $100 million in youth development services, which helped to serve about 20,000 kids, both reconnecting to school, graduating from high school, obtaining a GED, transitioning to college, apprenticeship, or onto post-secondary education. So, we've been in this business for a long time. I remember when Carol was the Executive Director at Open Metal, and we did a lot of work there. That has traditionally kind of been our space, where we have worked in partnership with Portland Public Schools and the alternative school networks. We do that for a couple of reasons. First, it's a smart investment, because you all are helping to reengage these kids and provide educational services, because it wasn't working for them in the traditional school model. And by co-investing in that model, it allows us to provide a broader array of services to those kids who really need it the most. And as a result, I think we're showing some tremendous outcomes with the students we're touching and working on together in, in the alternative school network. But increasingly, we are getting more and more interested in this world of career and technical education. And, you know, I don't know if these other guys didn't get the memo, but I got the memo, and we only were afforded three minutes for a presentation. So, I was like trying to cut this down, and now I'm like, I might as well just go for it. But, and now I completely lost my train of thought. But our, our goal really has been, we want, we know that there's a lot of people that are interested in educational reform and that have an opinion about that. I actually have a 37-member Board of Directors, and if I were to ask them, you know, how can we fix the public education system, everyone would have a different opinion. So, rather than trying to engage in that debate, we would much rather figure out ways to work together and partner on solutions that we know we can scale and work for our kids and to achieve those collective goals. So, we want you to think of us as a resource, as a partner that's willing to roll up our sleeves and figure out ways to really get kids connected to opportunities that we know are going to help them transition into the economy, be successful in the labor market, and earn the kinds of wages that they need to support themselves and their family. So, that's sort of our, our bent this afternoon. And I think we have found a few places where we think that we can add some value for you, and I'm going to turn it over to Heather, who is really the whole reason that we're sitting here, to sort of go over what are some of those specific areas that we've been working on in partnership with Jeannie, with PWA, and other organizations that are trying to improve in this area. So, Heather?
Well, I'm going to stick to my script and keep it brief. So, thanks, Andrew. And really, Jeannie and Andrew framed it really well. Our, our goal, I'm going to skip this one, because this is really about preparing the emergent workforce. This is what drives all of our work at our organization. But I want to talk about the continuum that has been referenced earlier as well, from career exposure to really career attachment, and that's what we're about. And so, Jeannie mentioned earlier that currently, we manage a system called BizConnect, and it is a rolodex of warm handoffs. And what we are moving to is in partnership with both the Portland Metro STEM Collaborative and the South Metro STEM Collaborative. We've developed, we've identified an existing data system through NEPRIS that is really a national best practice around being able to virtually and in-person connect and do those career-related learning experiences that are valuable to young people. And we're beta-testing it now. Several of the career counselors at PPS are beta-testing it, and we're getting really good response so far. Our backend system of BizConnect was really not working as well as we wanted it to, so we believe this will be an improvement and really will create more opportunity for young people to get exposed to careers that run the gamut. And they're actually, through the virtual component, can connect with different business professionals across the entire country. So, it, it's not even limited to our region. So, career exploration really is what Jeannie was talking about in our Summer Works program. So, 220 Portland Public School students were put to work last summer through our organization, and 25 of those positions were co-funded by Portland Public Schools. It is a public-private partnership. We fundraise nearly $700,000 a year to add to our federal resources to make this possible. 40% of the young people that we served overall in the program last summer were Portland Public School students. And 76% of those kids are kids of color, and 85% are low-income. We believe that they don't have the same access, low-income young people, as young people from family of means who can network and find an opportunity for their, for their son or daughter. So, these are some of the examples. These are some of our private sector partners. Boeing is up here, as is Trimate. Then, in the career preparation area, we, we really have three areas of focus. So, we, in programming, we have a business services focus where we need to meet the bar where businesses are. So, what, what is your need? Where is your pain point, private sector, and where you need employees? Then, we have the adult services that are through WorkSource, Portland Metro, and then a youth system. And in our youth services, we're really looking to address the emergent pipeline needs. And manufacturing is one area that we've really made tremendous strides. So, across the labor shed, which includes our partner webs, both to the north and Clackamas, what is that west?
So.
So, so, that, we developed a plan together with manufacturers in the area. There were more than 160 industry partners that informed this plan, and their number one workforce issue was a lack of young people coming up through the pipeline. That is their number one concern, and they're ready to really do something about it. Not that they haven't been, but there's a huge need there. And so, what they've achieved is really focusing on a plan that, as a result, was the successes from last year were really Manufacturing Day, where across the region, we put 600 kids on buses and got them out to manufacturing sites. Several of you, I think I saw a couple of board members at different, at different events. There has also been some legislation, some policy framework that's been advanced through this group that will help CTE coursework and create more opportunity. It's patterned after a Washington State policy that, that they found very effective in helping to create more effective CTE programming. And then, really identified and made recommendations around a set of standards that really all manufacturing programs should meet in order to really prepare young people to be ready to go into the workforce and take those manufacturing jobs. So, Jeannie has been a part of that, as has Kevin, through the Workforce Alliance. He sits on that. And then, career attachment. So, we've been working with Portland Public on implementing the National Career Readiness Certificate. This is a industry-recognized skill verification specifically focused on applied mathematics, reading for information, and locating information. And depending on how well the young person scores on this testing, it, it opens up the door for qualifying for certain levels of different kinds of positions. So, it's, it's an industry-recognized certification that can help really launch young people toward a career. And then, the area where we actually co-fund programming is in the alternative school area through multiple pathways, where these motivated, resilient young people are re-engaging in their education. And we have found over the years that the young people that are co-enrolled in our services as well as Portland Public School services graduate at a higher rate and persist and go on to post-secondary. So, that is that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, stick around. Why don't we have you folks go to the first, we're going to have a plaque for each of the groups. So, Work Systems, sorry, we're going to do our photo.
They may separately.
I'm going to give you our plaques and photos. So, board members, let's go up in front.
And I'll read it while you guys are assembling. Presented to Work Systems in recognition and appreciation of your contributions to the students and staff of Portland Public Schools. Thank you so much. Coming right around.
All right. Ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ace, our friends are ace. Antonio, come on up. Come on up, Ace. ACE Mentor Program in recognition and appreciation of your contribution to the students and staff of Portland Public Schools.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Workforce Alliance, come on up.
Presented to Workforce Alliance.
Come on, board. Part of the power of signing all of these. I was going to say, come on up.
So, we feel thankful. Thanks a lot.
Can we retake?
Okay, all right. Yeah, we are.
Okay, everybody ready?
Thank you.
You guys, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for all of going out to do it. If anybody else, you guys, what's going on? Come on up. Come on up. You open your mouth. Come on. I guess we should. Innovation challenge. All right, everybody ready?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Guys, thank you so much. Thank you, Susan. All right. Thank you so much. To all those wonderful partners. And now, the next item on our agenda is, is to acknowledge our teachers in celebration of National Teachers Appreciation Week. So, National Teachers Appreciation Week is May 4th through 8th. So, with tonight, we're taking the opportunity to celebrate our teachers. We are incredibly fortunate in this district to have a wealth of amazingly talented and dedicated teachers, and so does, on behalf of the Board, want to thank them for the incredibly hard work that they do each and every day in our classrooms. So, Superintendent Smith, do you want to provide some comments?
And I would actually like to, I'll turn it over to Sean Murray, who's our Chief Human Resources Officer. But I also just want to thank the teachers who were nominated by their peers to represent them and are here with us tonight to represent all of the teachers in this district. And we do have an outstanding group of teachers in Portland Public Schools. So, Sean Murray.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith and School Board. Good mor, good evening, everyone. I'm Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer, and I have the pleasure of introducing 10 PPS teachers, honorees, who were selected by their peers to be honored here tonight. We received almost 80 nominations this year. Selections involved our union partners and was very difficult, given the many outstanding and deserving teacher nominees. Tonight, each honoree will receive a crystal paperweight inscribed with the PPS logo and the words Outstanding Achievement, copies of all nominations forms submitted on their behalf by, and a copy of tonight's Board Resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which runs from May 4th through May 8th. At this time, I would like to individually call up each honoree to receive their gift from Superintendent Smith and School Board members. Honorees, please make sure to pause a moment for your photos.
All right, let us, we're going to get up and.
Yes.
Yeah, reposition.
All right. All right, our first honoree is Hannah Flynn, who is a first-grade teacher, Jason Lee School.
Pause for your photo.
Great, can you? Thanks. Thank you. Ready?
Thank you. Our next honoree is Rebecca Gregor, kindergarten teacher, Peninsula School. Our next honoree is Todd Haywood, special education teacher, Peninsula School. Our next honoree is Jess Hutchinson, third-grade teacher, Abernathy Elementary.
PPS teachers honorees who were selected by their peers to be honored here tonight. We received almost eighty nominations this year. Selections involved our union partners and was very difficult, given the many outstanding and deserving teacher nominees. Tonight, each honoree will receive a crystal paperweight inscribed with the PPS logo and the words Outstanding Achievement, copies of all nominations forms submitted on their behalf, and a copy of tonight's board resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which runs from May 4th through May 8th. At this time, I would like to individually call up each honoree to receive their gift from Superintendent Smith and school board members. Honorees, please make sure to pause a moment for your photos.
All right, let us, we're going to get up and
Yes.
Yeah, reposition.
All right. All right, our first honoree is Hannah Flynn, who is a first-grade teacher, Jason Lee School. I'll pause for your photo.
Greg, can you? Thanks, thank you. Ready?
Thank you. Our next honoree is Rebecca Gregor, kindergarten teacher, Peninsula School. Our next honoree is Todd Haywood, special education teacher, Peninsula School.
Ready?
Our next honoree is Jess Hutchinson, third-grade teacher, Abernathy Elementary. Our next honoree is Janice Ingersoll, sixth-grade language arts, social studies teacher, Hasler Middle School. Our next honoree is Andrew Kulak, language arts teacher, Jefferson High School. Our next honoree is Michelle Lackington, eighth-grade language arts, social studies teacher, West Sylvan Middle School. Our next honoree is Chrisanthias Lathan, mentor teacher, K-8. And our last honoree present tonight is Shelley Simonson, who is a kindergarten teacher at Chief Joseph Aquilier. Unfortunately, we had one honoree who was unable to attend this evening, so I would like to announce her name as well. It is Frankie Dennison, who is the second and third-grade teacher at Arlita School. So at this time, if all the honorees and the board and superintendent will come forward to pose for a picture. And if the audience could join me, and if the audience could join me in thanking our teacher appreciation honorees for this marvelous work that they do each and every day for the children and families of Portland Public Schools. Thank you.
And before you head out, we do have a resolution we'd like to vote on. Superintendent Smith, could you read the resolution for us?
Happily. So this is Resolution Number 5072, the Resolution to Celebrate National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 4th through May 8th, 2015. Approximately three thousand Portland Public School teachers and professional educators, through their expertise and passion, prepare the forty-eight thousand students in Portland Public Schools to succeed in college and career and to become responsible members of our community. The Board of Education acknowledges the daily work of our teachers in Head Start, preschool, elementary, middle, and high school, special education, English as a Second Language, and alternative education, as well as our curriculum coordinators, coaches, librarians, instructional specialists, counselors, psychologists, and teachers on special assignment for their commitment to excellence in education for all students of Portland Public Schools. Every day, PPS teachers challenge students through engaging in rigorous curriculum and instruction that is relevant to their lives, sparks their interests, and helps them to reach their potential. Every day, teachers build relationships with students and families to develop teamwork and collaboration that supports active, engaged learners in school and at home. Every day, teachers connect with colleagues and administrators to review and sharpen their practice and to find solutions that meet the needs of all students and learning challenges. Every day, teachers reach outside the classroom to build relationships with community partners that create vibrant and productive learning environments. Resolution, the Portland Board of Education declares May 4th through 8th, 2015, Teacher Appreciation Week in recognition and appreciation of our teachers' dedicated efforts to ensure the success of all students in Portland Public Schools. Thank you to all of our teachers.
Thank you so much. So the board will now vote on Resolution Number 5072, Resolution to Celebrate National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 4th through 8th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
So Director Morton moves, and Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5072. Is there any citizen comment?
There's not.
Any board discussion? Seeing
I just want to reemphasize that, you know, I know we've all talked about how many great teachers we have, but literally every day, I, my kids get to go to school, and they have fabulous teachers and have had fabulous teachers. Through my time and my service on the board, I've gotten to visit many, many classrooms, and there are extraordinary educators working every day in the classrooms under what is often constrained budgets, really making the world come alive for our students. And I just want to just add my voice again to a really specific thank you for understanding what education is really about and for making it come alive for our students. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you. So the board will now vote on Resolution 5072. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
No opposed? Any abstentions? No. Resolution 5072 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Great, all right. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. So Superintendent Smith, over to you.
So I'm going to start with news people may have already heard, but I wanted, and we actually are fortunate to have Grant Principal Carol Campbell here in the audience, but the Grant High School Constitution team just won the national We the People championship. Carol, will you just stand and let us recognize you? So tonight, the team will be coming home via Portland Airport, and we generally have large groups of people who go to greet them as they return from their championship. This is a big deal for the Generals, who won two years ago, and it's incredible for Portland Public Schools. This is our fourth consecutive year that Portland Public Schools has won the national championship, and it's our seventh national title overall. So congratulations to the Generals, and we look forward to welcoming the team and honoring them in person. We were also really fortunate to have had Nobel laureate Rigoberta Menchu visit PPS on April 16th. She won a 1992 Nobel Peace Prize for her civil rights work on behalf of indigenous Guatemalans. She's become an international symbol for social justice, and I'm just going to say this was an amazing, amazing event. With support from the Guatemalan consulate in Portland, Dr. Menchu accepted our invitation to visit Portland Public Schools while in Oregon for the Peace Jam Conference. Ms. Dr. Menchu delights in the opportunity to meet with young people who she views as the catalyst for a more just world. She met with more than two dozen of our Guatemalan students from Roosevelt, Jefferson, and Pisa in a private reception at Jefferson before her speech. Then she delivered a powerful speech in the Jefferson Auditorium to more than fifteen hundred PPS students, families, and staff, as well as community members from Oregon and southwest Washington, followed by a small reception. She spoke in Spanish with simultaneous translation in English and American Sign Language, and you can see from some of the photos of her visit, it was a really moving, wonderful visit, and students got the chance to ask really personal questions that she responded to really candidly and heartfelt. So we have a short video I wanted to share with you. And before it actually pops on, I just want to say thank you to the PPS staff who put this event together. It was a pretty, it was a large-scale organizational effort to provide a really intimate opportunity to meet with somebody who has just tremendous presence and impact in the world. So here is Rigoberta.
And if we want happiness to be in the world, we have to start by being happy ourselves. If I'm happy, maybe I can inject a little bit of happiness in the rest of the people.
This was just an amazing opportunity for our kids to be able to hear somebody that has made such a huge difference, not only for the people of Guatemala, but as a symbol of the world, what one person can do to make this world a better place.
So I, I really look forward to you being great leaders.
Some things I could get into to help assist the country, or like ways I could go back and just do things personally inside the country to help.
She has made a change, not only Guatemala, but only Central America and in other countries, by having peace and giving hope to the people that there could be a change.
She's an amazing woman. She has an amazing amount of courage. I must say so myself, personally, like for that amount of activism, again, for like the right group of people in that country who were so under oppressed in the Civil War and everything.
It was a living history lesson, and students were able to ask questions, and she was just so inspirational, and just to be able to be close to her, there is an aura in terms of her personality, in terms of how she shows herself with a lot of humility.
From a woman's perspective, I know that women can do lots of things, and not only men's can make a change.
Thank you. Four hundred times, thank you.
It was really a wonderful experience, I'm just going to say, and you can tell, you could feel it just by that little clip. I'm going to just, one of my favorite questions that a student asked during the small conversation, and he was really moved listening to Rigoberta, and then he said, "How, as a young person, do I work for peace? Is it through my education? Like, do we become activists? Is it just what happens in our minds? Are we just finding peace in our minds?" Anyway, I was like, okay, I love this question, and she was so heartfelt in how she discussed this with students. So anyway, I just wanted to add that because it was one of the moments that really moved me. Okay, we have another wonderful opportunity, which is, this year, we had sort of our third annual Innovation Challenge in partnership with Portland, Portland State's School of Engineering, and it's a fabulous challenge to our high schools. So the theme of the competition this year was smart cities, making our urban communities safer, healthier, and happier. And part of what happens is the teams are challenged to identify a current problem and design a solution that will make Portland a safer, healthier, or happier place to live using science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM learning. The projects this year were so impressive that we have one of the teams who is going to actually demonstrate their project for you. It was Grant High School's team, and they designed a bike parking finder app, and won in, which won in three categories, the best presentation, the best technology focus, and the audience favorite. The strongest concept category win went to Lincoln High School with the team's V-Lock, a more secure bike locking system to prevent theft. The best team venture award went to Metropolitan Learning Center for its gray water purification system. Madison High School won for the most impactful on society with a design for converting shipping containers into housing for the homeless. And Franklin, Jefferson, and Wilson also made great presentations. Grant's presentation was so well-received that I invited members of the team to come and give us a demonstration of their bike parking finder app. And here today, we have Corey Kohler, Alex Taylor, and Sarah Sinclair, and I'm going to invite you to come on up and tell us about your presentation and do a little demonstration for us. And I'd also like to, while they're getting settled, Jim Hook is here with us, and he's part of actually helping host this at PSU with the School of Engineering, so he was here for a previous presentation because he's also on the Board of Workforce Alliance, so thank you for sticking around for this.
So I just want to say thank you for inviting us. So PSU Innovation Challenge has been going for about three years now, and as Ms. Smith said, it's, the theme this year was smarter cities, and we decided that we were going to do a bike parking app, which led to more, like a prototype and a website, but yeah, so we decided to do that, and it basically just finds you a biking park spot, and we just wanted, since transportation has become more of an issue with also climate change as well as
Urbanization.
Urbanization, yeah. So, yeah, so we decided that this was a pretty big issue, and this was our way to solve it.
So, hey, I'm Alex, and I worked on the app, which is a mobile app for smartphones, but also a web app for, you can just visit in your browser. So I worked on that, and I worked on that along with Richard, who worked on our prototype here, which is the actual physical hardware piece. Fortunately, you can be here today, but I'll, we're going to give a quick demonstration. You guys want to do that? No?
Yeah, so Richard built something he likes to call the logic box, which is down here, I don't think the cameras can see it all that well, pretty much a black box with a Raspberry Pi computer in it, as well as some other objects of technological interest that I'm not familiar with. But it hooks up to a main server that works with the website and the app that transmits real-time data about whether or not a bike is parked in locations around the city. And it hooks up at each location through this prototype here. This would eventually be made of more resilient materials that's also waterproof. But if we set it down here, when a bike rolls up to it, it will push down on it since it's a pressure sensor connecting the circuit, which if we switch to the computer screen, will show that the, in a covered parking space, a bike is currently parked in this location, and when the tire rolls away, it says there is no bike currently parked in this location. For, if we wanted to bring this to the whole city, there would only need to be one of these black boxes in each parking location with a pressure sensor in each separate slot. Yeah.
Yeah, which connects to the logic box.
Yeah, we are actually planning to continue this project into the summer with help from PSU students who just took a transportation class and created an entire database of their parking locations throughout the PSU campus, so we're hoping to make the website even bigger.
Um, yeah, I want to add that the components inside this logic box are relatively inexpensive. I think the Raspberry Pi is about fifteen dollars, and the Arduino is like ten dollars-ish. The only component we don't have is a cellular, cellular-like connection dongle, so unfortunately, we can't actually connect it to the internet right now, but other than that, it's, it's working. But other than that, it's, it's working, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, so what we didn't get to show you is, once the bike is put on that spot, it sends some info to our server, which is then accessed by the app, and so people can see, oh, hey, there's a bike at this parking location. So, yeah.
Great, thank you so much. You guys, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And actually, I'd like to just recognize Eric Mason, who's their advisor at Grant High School in the back. Will you just wave for us? Yay. And again, Principal Carol Campbell. And was this the third year that Grant participated in the Innovation Challenge? Two, every year, and again next year, up next year? Yay. That's great. You guys, really great project. That was wonderful. Thank you for demonstrating. And actually, will you come on up, and I'm gonna give you a little takeaway. And Jim, thank you for staying for that, and for being part of making that happen every year. You know what, there's still a poster here, too, if they... Oh, you guys, your poster is up in front, your big...
Your display board?
Your poster board? Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah, for the other child.
There's one that was saved for somebody's...
There were four kids in the project.
Oh, get one more right there, but not the one with the purple on it.
Thank you. Sorry, got it. Okay, next, I have three outstanding students to tell you about tonight, who are part of our tag program. On Friday, we learned that Sagan Gim, a Wilson High School sophomore, has won second place in a national essay contest sponsored by the American Society of Human Genetics, based in Maryland. She identified and then wrote about a phenomenon that expands on the traditional definition of a gene. She participates in OHSU's Partnership for Scientific Inquiry through Wilson High School, and she wrote the contest essay as part of her homework. KGW came out on Friday to report on her big award, six hundred dollars for her and six hundred dollars for her teacher to invest in genetics materials for the classroom. Congratulations to Sagan, her chemistry teacher, Mike DuChau Presley, and the student teacher, Richard Topping, her OHSU teachers and Sagan's family. So this is pretty cool recognition. Another outstanding student is Clement Deng. And Clement, you want to just stand up while I'm talking about you? I know, this is kind of torture. Clement is a, Clement is a junior at Lincoln High School. His efforts to develop a faster and more accurate data mining method won him first place at the Intel State Science Fair in the Computer Science and Robotics category. In addition to winning the top prize in the Computer Science and Robotics category, he won four additional awards. Lewis and Clark College Faculty Scholarship valued at fifteen thousand dollars, OSU Scholarship Award, the American Statistical Association Tom Owen Award for Excellence in Statistics, the Intel Excellence in Computer Science Award. Clement will compete at the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Pittsburgh in a few weeks. He will also present a paper on his data mining method to the International Electrical and Electronics Engineers International Symposium on Multiple Valued Logic on May 19th at the University of Waterloo in Canada. His study of data mining could have wide-ranging impact on a number of fields, and I want to recognize him for his outstanding work, Clement. And now, finally, a fifth grader, Augustin Montez Tacuba, who has been chosen as the Oregon Association of Talented and Gifted Young Scholar for this school year. Augustin, come on up. So Augustin might have missed out on tag had it not been for his second-grade teacher who immediately recognized his gifts. Now he attends Access Academy, where he's known as a math standout and a leader who tutors other children in Spanish and English. Augustin receives a five-hundred-dollar scholarship to a summer enrichment program, which will allow him to attend camp for the first time. Augustin is here with his family, and will his family please stand and let us recognize them? And congratulations on this wonderful recognition from your school and from representing PPS beautifully. So wear your t-shirt, PPS Pride, and we're all proud of you. Okay, I also wanted to let you know about a group of Hosford students who are involved in the Hosford Engaged in Active Teens, or HEAT, after-school program. Fifteen of these students, most of them tag students, traveled to New York for the International Model UN Conference. The students attended the opening ceremonies and got to sit in the seats of actual UN representatives. Before going to New York, they stopped in Washington DC and met with Senator Wyden and Congressman Earl Blumenauer, and we just wanted to let you know about this, because it was a very cool thing for these students. Jefferson High School Rose Festival Princess, Cohija Burley, takes down stereotypes as a varsity wrestler. She wrestles at 120 pounds, competes in volleyball and track, is the captain of the Jefferson Cheerleaders, and is active in student government and the Black Student Union. A junior in Jefferson's Health Science and Biotech Program, she plans to attend a four-year university and study marketing. She's among 15 outstanding young women from Portland metro area high schools who serve on the Rose Festival Court, promoting our city, getting mentored by top female executives, and earning a 3,500 college scholarship. She ended her first wrestling season this year with seven wins. Okay, I wanted to share a quick update on our third grade reading priority. In addition to the great work of our teachers in the classroom, every day, our Read Together partner organizations are busy helping us ensure that all students read by the third grade. Reading results and Smart Volunteers are tutoring struggling readers. The Timbers and Thorns are visiting our schools and reading to students in English and Spanish. We're all distributing books almost monthly to help build home libraries for all of our students. U as a board set aside funding for culturally-specific books, and we're in the process of getting that generous batch of books out to schools. And we have a video of a new pilot project. Last month, we distributed iPads to 80 families at Harrison Park, Lent, Markham and Whitman. These iPads are loaded with literacy skill-building apps and will help us bridge the digital divide while helping parents work with our students. You can see the excitement around this project in the video.
I'm Andy Wheeler. I'm the Senior Project Manager in the Oxford Teaching and Learning. We're here at Whitman Elementary today to distribute iPads to 20 kids. Here you go.
Thank you.
Well, they spend time already on like phones or TV, and this one is gonna be like something interesting for them.
It works just like, just like a library, just like a library book. Kids are checking out iPads, they're equipped with 4G internet access, and they're able to use a series of apps that we've installed at home.
It's cool.
For some kids that can't read as well as other kids, it gives them the confidence.
Because they play some math games, and there's some apps.
When you read, it's kind of like a new world in your mind.
So being able to point and click on things, and just pictures and objects, is a much more powerful way for a student to use a device. Family also gets some brief training tonight, and then they're gonna come back two more times this year for additional training and additional activities to help parents and kids work on student literacy together. Great background music.
Okay, I'm just gonna tell you, we have really cool stuff going on in our schools, which is why I'm telling you this much. And this time of year, a lot of students are completing projects, are being recognized for things, so we have lots of good news, and we just wanted to tell this, tell it to you. So Abernathy's Garden was recognized yesterday by Congressman Earl Blumenauer at his Women's Leadership Luncheon. Abernathy's School Kitchen Garden Program provides kids with comprehensive food-based education, garden space, a working kitchen with a chef and fresh produce eaten at meals, a program that improves student learning and instills lifelong habits of health. This one, who was honored at the luncheon, were the group of mothers who were really the driver behind getting this started back in 2000. And now, 500 student lunches are supplemented by food from the garden, and it was an honor to be at the luncheon and have Abernathy recognized. There's great community energy around this garden as well. A lot of learning, good eating, lifelong habits and community building. Beaumont eighth graders are tackling a college-level project with state-of-the-art technology and preserving a crucial part of our state and city's history in the process as they collect the oral histories of Vanport residents. Students created their own video documentaries with guidance from Concordia University graduate student Matthew Blanchard and US History and Language Arts teacher Kristen Parrott. Blanchard has combined students' photos and videos with GIS data and photos and created an augmented reality using an app called Junio. When anyone with the Junio app points a phone or tablet toward Vanport, old snapshots of the community will pop up, as will videos and information about the buildings and the residents. The project has been covered by the Oregonian and OPB, and students have been invited to speak at conferences, and more Vanport residents have stepped forward to tell their stories. So a really actually important part of documenting history in our community. It is really great, and it's very cool. Verslandia, one of my favorite events of the year, except this year it happened during a board meeting, so we were all here together rather than watching, so we brought you clips from Verslandia. So 20 students from 11 schools competed in the citywide high school poetry slam Verslandia, sponsored by Literary Arts. Cleveland's Gwen Frost took first place this year, wowing the crowd of hundreds at the Newmark Theater. Bella Trent of Madison, who was last year's winner, took second. Sakai Edwards of Jefferson placed third. Quentin Dixon of Roosevelt placed fourth, and tying for fifth were Wilson's Fiona Murphy and Roosevelt's Alexis Canard. Congratulations to these brave and entertaining poets, and let's watch a clip of the poetry from the slam.
In rotation, or when prices are down at the gas station, heart rate up like inflation as I wait in anticipation I'm only three struts away from my mini-vacation. And Clark Kent to Superman, give me a moment to jump into my disguise, hopefully I brought the right supplies. Pull my hair out my face, puff up my chest and stretch my neck to the skies. I should forget I'm a Greek, this beautiful creature. I think to myself, that would be wise. Then it hits me like lightning, and after all the internal fighting, I man up and say, "Hey, how you doing?"
You'll watch the house implode on itself from a safe place, and then you'll keep running, even if you always did kind of love the smell of campfire. But if you're not smart, I don't know what to tell you. Maybe you like the way the flames lick a little too close to your skin, maybe when the smoke is scratching at the inside of your lungs, you feel refreshed, because at least you and the smoke are both trapped, and misery always loves company, even if it is just for one night.
You see, but I, I'm taking a stand, standing up to these shadows, these silhouettes, this devilish other part of me that I can't escape from. I don't want this dark passenger anymore. I don't want to wear some facade every single day, all because I have to be just like him, or just like her, or just like everyone else.
I am a cultural connection to our past oppression. I am the future and the past. I object to the ideal that yin is bad and black is evil, because I mean, come on, people, let's look at history. I am black, like the ocean's greatest secret and the lion's greatest mane. I am black, I am black, I am black. So this, right here, is for everybody that loves to ask me, so what are you?
It was wonderful to see the Rosa Parks Bravo Youth Orchestra playing alongside the Oregon Symphony during a concert and gala on April 16th. Twenty-four of the school's third and fourth graders played La Bella Cubano with amazing professional musicians on the stage of the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall. We applaud the symphony for including our students. It was an amazing evening, and they did, each one of the students got to sit by their counterpart in the Oregon Symphony and play, and they were magnificent. They were magnificent. Another shout-out to Amanda Alonso, who's a history teacher at Madison High School. In December, she won the 2014-15 Civic Educator of the Year from the Classroom Law Project, and last week, she was recognized again at Classroom Law Project as the Legal Citizen of the Year. Here is a photo of her at the dinner. She works with Madison's Constitution Team and is doing a terrific job, so I just wanted to commend her again, because she was again recognized this past week. So, congratulations, Amanda. So Lila, a pop singer supervised by students, surprised students at Kelly School last week after learning of their anti-bullying video that they created with her permission to use her hit song. The students were unveiling their video in the school gym when the singer, who is a Grant High School graduate, made a special appearance. Here's a part of the video that the kids made to help stop bullying, and they made a real connection with Lila, who was gracious and kind with her little fans. Here's what the video is.
I'm really, really excited about the event that we have planned today. So please pay attention to the video. Initially showcased a bullying awareness video.
Wow, did you see that? Look in the background, did you see those two kids? I think one of them is bullying the other.
We have a song at the end called Wake Up, that is by a Portland recording artist, Lila.
I think we did a video about bullying without even noticing it.
The school doesn't know in particular that she will be coming out from behind the curtains.
It's pretty amazing to have a star five feet away from you.
Yeah, it was sweet, it almost made me cry. Like, I had to hold back the tears. I showed my mother last night, too, and she was like, "I'm gonna cry." Because it was a compliment, but more so a compliment, just that children get the message.
It's not an everyday thing at our school to have a star on our stage.
When you see somebody picking on someone else, instead of just walking by and ignoring it, you do something about it.
Bullying itself is a big problem, but there will be people like me graduating, going into middle school and high school, and things will get tough, and you need to know that you will prevail through whatever you have gone through.
They're the future, they're the youth, they're gonna build our world in the future, and so to be able to reach them is really, it's a big deal to me.
I know. Give a hand to our filmmakers, Kelly. Couple more things. One, I just want to remind people to take our Portland Public Schools 2025 survey. This is a survey that's a chance for our entire community to help shame, shape the change as we grow in enrollment over the coming decade. It is on the website, www.organskitchentable.org. You can also download it at www.pps.net, or get it at any of our schools and turn it in at any PPS school office. So please take the survey, we're trying to get, hear from as many members of our community as we can. And then finally, an update on our band instruments. So this fall, PPS band teachers will finally get to put 750 new district-owned band instruments in the hands of budding musicians, thanks to the school board's decision to invest nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars toward rebuilding a program that has been eroded by years of budget cuts. The money is part of the investment the board set aside in February for strategic one-time investments. for strategic one-time investments after higher local option property tax collections. And we have long loaned instruments to students at little or no cost on the principle that money shouldn't block a student from experiencing creativity, collaboration, and perseverance taught through music education. So, we're really excited about this, and there's great excitement in the students who are getting to use these instruments. And we have a short video on this one, too, and then we're, then it's a wrap.
This one still sounds fine. We would have to put these back on and get that glued to something.
Selwood Middle School student Henry Rice shows us his 40-year-old baritone horn.
And it's all dented up and stuff.
Eighth grader Nick Skalberg remembers struggling with his first trombone, and because of that experience, he had thoughts of giving up music.
I chose the trombone because I thought it would be fun to play, and then I got one, and I thought, I thought it was me, not the instrument.
Henry and Nick's wishes are now coming true thanks to Superintendent Carol Smith's vision and the PPS Board, which has approved $925,000 to purchase new band instruments.
The economy is improving, and our local tax revenues were greater than we anticipated. After 12 years on the Board, I cannot tell you how excited I am that we are going to be able to offer our students new musical instruments.
You know, it probably either dropped sideways.
Jenny Johnson has hundreds of instruments too damaged or simply worn out for future use. As the district's only repair technician, she says the last time the district bought new band instruments, Ronald Reagan was still president. On most days, Jenny is able to repair three to four instruments. She hopes to purchase up to 750 new clarinets, flutes, and saxophones, plus other instruments so desperately needed for band programs. She says quality instruments are not cheap.
Probably what we'll be purchasing the most of will be flutes and clarinets. Probably about $450 to $600. If we're going to purchase a new Barry Sax, that's probably about five or six grand. A new set of timpani is probably more like 10 grand.
As these eighth graders at Selwood Middle School prepare for their next concert, nearly half are playing on instruments older than their parents. Some students in the district have had to share their flutes and horns, and although they don't mind, they are looking forward to becoming better musicians with the help of bright and shiny new instruments doing schools this fall.
Yeah, and I'm excited as a music teacher in Portland Public Schools, and been doing this for a while, that, yeah, it's like the arts are coming back.
All right, thank you so much for all that wonderful news. So, next on our agenda is student testimony. So, students, I think we have some students signed up tonight, Ms. Houston?
We have three, and our first two speakers, Sid Reed and Chris Nye.
So, while you're coming down, thank you so much for your patience in waiting for your turn to speak. We've had quite a full agenda tonight. Thank you so much for being here. Really glad to hear from you. And we have three minutes to speak, and if you begin by stating your name for the record and spelling your last name, and then when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left, and when the red light comes on, we respectfully ask that you wrap up then. Thanks so much for being here.
My name's Sid Reed, S-R-E-E-D.
And I'm Chris Nye, N-I-N-E.
Hello, my name is Sid Reed, and I'm a sophomore at Lincoln High School. Recently, my U.S. History teacher gave us an assignment on race, ethnicity, belief system, gender expression, and sexuality, and how well it is represented in the curriculum that we study. Overall, my impression is that PPS does a phenomenal job with covering just about everything, but I still do detect a trifling amount of things that are less fixated on than others. One of these less, or lesser fixated on subjects than others would have to be the history of Pacific Islanders. I can't speak for the rest of the semester or for my forthcoming history classes, but from the history classes that I have endured, I don't exactly recall much on Pacific Islanders, categorically Hawaii. The United States overthrew the Hawaiian Kingdom on January 17, 1893. The ultimate goal of the revolutionaries was the annexation of the islands to the United States, which was eventually accomplished in 1898. I frankly think that there should at least be a meager unit on Pacific Islanders at some point in our studies. We recently finished studying the Chikano Movement of the 1960s, a unit on slavery and the Civil War. And before that, we did a unit on the history of Native Americans. The history of Pacific Islanders could have accompanied all of these units fantastically, and I think they went through a lot just like everybody else, and that is what I see underrepresented in the curriculum that we study. I'm also in Sid's U.S. History class with the same teacher, and I was pleasantly surprised this year with the new curriculum that our school had developed for U.S. History. I didn't necessarily think much about U.S. History before it. I just kind of like, I knew, I knew a general amount about it, but I didn't really think in-depth about it and how it affected things today. And as Sid said, I think it did bring some great light on, especially me, being obviously a white male in the society full of powerful white men, bring a light on the problems that that brings up in society and how that's a barrier that we have to overcome. But going on from this, I think that in our schools, there needs to be a bigger conversation on current events that are happening around the world. Because even in these past four days, or past, yeah, this week, starting on Monday, especially with the Baltimore riots, I haven't heard a word about it from any of my teachers and barely any students talking about it. And I think that that's an issue, because as much as all of the things can help learning from the past, it doesn't really do anything if we don't talk about what's happening right now and those problems, and how we can try to solve those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Brad Subromanian.
Welcome, Brad, thanks for coming.
Thank you. So today, I have bronchitis, so it'll be a little hard for me to speak. But I'm not gonna be complaining to you guys like my friends did about something that could be fixed. I think there's a lot of good things that we can do, that we have done with our educational system, and that's what I'll be talking to you about. And so I'm also a history student in Mr. Bain's class, and I'm here to talk to you also because I'm gonna get a few extra credit points in my U.S. History class. Wait a second, that's why I'm here. I'll have an A regardless of this, because I work hard for that. But there's three things that I'm going to talk about to you, with you today. It's that critical thinking is encouraged by teachers, it's that every student has an equal chance in our education, and that education needs to start in the families. So let's go on to my first point of critical thinking. My dad was raised in India, and he went to a classic Commonwealth school where critical thinking was not supported. In fact, it was suppressed by corporal punishment. One of my friends from health class, who is from Holland, told me that U.S. schools are very bad, and I quite oppose this statement. It's a known fact, and it's commonly thrown around, that Asian and Nordic countries score very high in test scores, and where mugging up is the most important thing in the part of studying. My history teacher, Mr. Bain, my, Mr. Bain and I stand quite often in opposition and sometimes lock horns. I could have had a D or a failing grade in my class many times, and I'm sure he was unhappy because of that. But I have the utmost respect for him now, and he still encourages me to speak my point of view, even though we might not have the same agreements. If you'd put Einstein in an Asian language class, we might have not had the theory of relativity. And with these words, we shouldn't be focusing on bumping up our nation's test scores. While this isn't necessarily bad, we should be creating a learning environment where kids can think for themselves, and I think that critical thinking is very important and should be encouraged in schools all throughout Portland Public Schools. So I'm gonna go on to my second point now, and that's equal opportunity for all. The second part of my story is my mom. She's from Eastern Europe, where if you have a disability, you do not have the options like you have in this country. I just attended the state speech and debate tournament, and last weekend there was a girl in a wheelchair who had significant physical and speech impairment. I would see her zooming through the rooms onto her next speech round, and because of the iPad software that she had, she was able not only to communicate, but to compete in the tournament, and she will be representing Oregon in the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Texas, something that even I couldn't do. And this is something we rarely see in any other country. My third and final point is that education needs to start in the families. I call upon my friends and everyone I know in my school to regularly attend classes instead of ditching and roaming through empty hallways. If only they listened to the teacher, they would get passing grades. It's as simple as that. More importantly, I call upon parents and guardians to shut off their TVs and games during the week, and insist on homework and monitoring their, and monitoring their kids. It would make us the most educated nation in the world, not only in numbers and test scores. And so with these words, I'm not saying we shouldn't be improving our educational system, but there's many things to be proud of and many things to work on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Outstanding student testimony tonight. Thank you all so much for coming, and also congrats for getting those extra credit points. Next on our agenda, we have our student representatives' report.
Hey, awesome. So first of all, join Supersac. You guys should all message me and join Supersac. But then, I'd like to talk about how last month, Sierra Jose and I, she's a member of Supersac and a senior at Franklin High School, had the opportunity to attend the Council of Great City Schools Legislative Meeting in DC. So, we got to attend this conference, which brings educational leaders from across the nation together to learn about huge issues that the country faces in educating our children, and then solutions as well. So it was really awesome getting to hear from so many leaders across the country about what they're facing in their districts and their creative solutions to solving these problems. Some issues that we're facing here, too, that were brought up a lot, were funding and high-stakes standardized testing. So it was a nice perspective to gain what other students across the country are facing as well, and some other solutions that people have found. And then Sierra and I were also able to lobby in Congress, which was awesome, getting to talk to our elected officials about huge, important issues. Something that was brought up a lot was how Title I dollars were allocated, because there's a proposal in Congress to change it in which PPS would lose a lot of Title I dollars. So Sierra and I spoke up a lot about that, just because we know how important Title I dollars are in our district and what services they provide to children. So overall, it was just a really great experience getting to be informed and then getting to take action alongside a friend of mine and hopefully bring about some positive change. And secondly, I'd like to congratulate Grant again, just because it's a huge achievement for them. These students have put in tremendous amounts of work, especially during their second part of their senior year, when others, there are other students may not be working as hard. These students have really fought for it, and they deserve to be the best in the nation. So overall, thank you for your time. Join Supersac.
Thank you so much, Mina. Right next, we have public comment. Ms. Houston, who do we have signed up?
Yes, we have three. Our first two speakers, Dave Porter and Jamal Dar.
Well, Mr. Porter's been here very often, so I'll just briefly say, please state your name for the record. And as always, you have three minutes, and the yellow light goes on after two minutes. Thank you so much for being here.
Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Chair Adkins, Superintendent Smith, members of the Board, and members of the public. Tonight, I want to step outside the educational silo and place additional dual-language immersion programs in the context of Portland's economic future. Portland's best economic future is to sell more goods and services abroad, especially in the growing markets in Asia and around the Pacific Rim. Consider the chart, global competition is fierce, with growth, with growth shifting away from the U.S. I think you have my written testimony. Portland's challenge is to adapt to this developing economic reality and become more of an internationally oriented city. Key to this adaptation is to develop a more multilingual workforce with experiences in the important growing markets abroad. I am not alone in seeing a more international future for Portland. I am distributing to each of you, I think you have copies, of Greater Portland Global, recently developed by Greater Portland Inc., the Portland Development Commission, the Brookings Institution, J.P. Morgan Chase, and others. The report begins, "The Imperative to Go Global." Global engagement is not optional if Portland is to realize widely shared economic growth and prosperity. It is imperative. Increased access to global markets and foreign investment is the most direct path for Greater Portland to create and maintain a sufficient number of quality jobs to support the region's growing population. The need to embrace international markets is urgent. Ninety-five percent of the world's consumers live outside of the United States, and 79% of global growth is projected to occur outside the U.S. over the next five years. At this early stage, Greater Global Inc. has not yet involved K-5 school districts in this effort. When they do, they will want the development of a multilingual workforce through the expansion of dual-language immersion program. Greater Portland Inc. is also in the midst of what they call a groundbreaking, groundbreaking seven-county, two-state economic development partnership called Greater Portland 2020. So I urge Portland Public Schools to become a part of their effort and to show what it can add. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent Smith, Board Member, thank you for having me. My name is Jamal Dar. I'm Executive Director of nonprofit called Echo, African Youth and Community Organization, helping immigrants and refugees, especially the Somali population. As everyone knows here, the emerging language were introduced last year. We're working very hard with, with Michael Beckham and his department. We achieve and learn from one another very hugely, not only individually, but also with the community members. With that said, we still have many gaps that we need to be achieved. So if I want to share with you a little bit of a story about the organization, what we've been doing, we noticed that our children are facing so many challenges, first time coming to the United States. They, they're not here to die in the streets, to become gangsta, or to recruit by al-Shabaab or extremist terrorists, but they're here to have a life, but they need a visionary, someone who can help them mentor. So we put together a program that were educating more, not only for the immigrant or refugee, but also the teachers. Couple of years ago, at Jackson Middle School, we put together about 50 teachers, including principals and counselors, with 15-years-old Moktar, who's from Somalia. He had two letters, and he speak, one was written in Somali, one was written in English. So he stood in front of the 50 educators, and he started speaking in Somali. Five minutes later, he sat down. Everybody was kind of wandering around, and you can hear the noise and the war. And he stood up and he said, "Obviously, you guys don't understand. You want me to explain that in English?" Everybody was, "Yes, please." Those are the difficult that, before he, interpreter, he said, "These are the difficulties that we face coming to your classrooms." And I think that, that was a one message that we want to send it to the teachers. Nevertheless, the parents from back home, they never seen any, some sort of education that parents are responsible. It's always been teacher's responsibility. So we form Education Task Force, Task Force and the Council from within the Somali community, over more than 25 members. And these are nine Education Task Forces who will be working very closely with this school district, including the Board, and have their proposals, and their name is probably submitted by, by upcoming week. But, but then, at the same time, there is a two position that was identified for the Somali community to support, their program manager and then curriculum design. We definitely want to encourage you, not only to, to make that decision, but also to make that decision together collectively with the community, especially with those task forces. We appreciate and excited, excited about the connection that we finally made together. And again, this is the new generation, for the last 20 years coming to the United States. But we're learning our way, please be patient with us. And definitely, I want to recognize Melissa Garfus, Superintendent Smith, and also at the same time, Michael Beckham, who is working very closely with us. Thank you for your time tonight.
Wonderful, thank you so much for your partnership.
And our last speaker is Greg Burrow.
Welcome, Mr. Burrow.
Oh, good evening, everybody, good to be back. My name is Greg Burrow, B-U-R-R-I-L. And I guess what I'd like to say, first of all, I feel honored to be part of such an uplifting program, to see some of the things that we're doing are heartwarming. And this is good, because today, I came here just to thank you. And this is good because today I came here just to thank you. You know, a lot of times I say critical things. This is all about thanking you. Today, I am assuming that we are all behaving with the best of intentions for our children at every level, from custodian and secretary to senior advisors and our superintendent. We are all doing the very best we can given our resources. This is the same as me saying to my students, "This is the first day of class. You all have an A right now." I thank you for doing the best you can with what you have been given. The school board campaign can be contentious, so I want each one of you listening, including you at home, to meditate on the fact that no one in our organization has the intention to harm our precious children. Be grateful for every good action and forgive every harmful action. I believe that no one has bad intentions. So today's not a day for me to speak about any problems in Portland Public Schools. Today I wanted to share my vision for the future. Today I speak the intention that we are creating an organization capable of healing and forgiving each other and ourselves. We are creating an organization that's capable of healing the perception of a toxic relationship between district staff and school staff. The written material I'm sending you gives you details about the process I'm thinking about. But remember, after the teacher's contract was settled, I spoke about forgiveness. It's really time to get serious about forgiving ourselves and each other. Forgiveness isn't easy, though. If you need inspiration, take it from those who forgive their children's murderers. Right? I believe that without forgiveness, there's not going to be progress. I do a daily meditation and I affirm every day that I will act positively, non-violently and inclusively. I intend to be a demonstration of the principles that I live by. I'm pledging to do what's mine to do in order to elect a new school board that will create a vision for PPS that will make it one of the best public school systems in the country. I intend to continue to be a listener. For two years, I've listened to lots of people, students, parents, teachers, other education professionals, but not all of them. Many people in our community do not feel heard by board and staff. Look around this room and think about those who are absent. There are almost no people here from Mexico, Guatemala, the Philippines, Russia, Ukraine, Somalia, Haiti or Pacific Islands, almost no Asians, no African-Americans and very few staff whose presence isn't required by our meeting agenda. So I'm asking you now to put aside anything in your heart that gets in the way of the birth of the schools that our children deserve. Peace.
Thank you very much. So in that spirit, in accordance with our contract with Portland Association of Teachers, when requested, we're very happy to welcome them to come and speak on our agenda. So Suzanne Cohen, Vice President of PAT, is going to join us now for some brief comments. Good evening, Suzanne.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight I'd like to talk a little bit about the high school schedule. And I'm, as you are probably aware, we just won a grievance and one of the things that the arbitrator said is that our current high school schedule is out of compliance and needs to be changed. And if you need any background information, I'd be happy to fill anyone in on this afterwards. So PAT brought together groups of teachers and district representatives to develop schedules that would comply with the arbitrator's decision and also make teaching and learning better because everyone agrees the current high school schedule needs improvement. So in this subgroup, there was a group for a five-of-seven team to look at that modified five-of-seven block and another work group working on getting our current six-of-eight of schedule in compliance with the arbitrator's decision. Just so you know, a majority of teachers did prefer a modified five-of-seven block and it would meet three other needs that I spoke about at a previous board meeting. The first being our impending budget crisis with our glide path in becoming in compliance with the ten-eleven school year. Also better would meet the state's requirements for having eighty percent of students in compliance. And also the teachers liked a modified five-of-seven because they could see their students at least four times a week this way. But what we found out was that we would get a six-of-eight schedule. And we found that out first from high school counselors who informed us that they had been told to schedule students for a six-of-eight schedule. And then on April 2nd, Brock Logan informed us that there would be a six-of-eight schedule. And we heard some positive rumors, but at this point, they are rumors. There won't be a skinny Monday. There'll be more tutorial time. But what we also heard is that this work was going to be done without any meaningful input, input from educators. We were told that people, not teachers, were going to work on a draft schedule and that PAT could be one of several groups that would then be provided an opportunity to give feedback on this draft schedule. And that's basically the day our input has ended, almost a month ago. We've been waiting since then to see a draft schedule. And there's a lot of decisions that need to be made, contract exceptions, part-time schedules, if people want to reduce their FT. We have principals contacting us right now, asking us about information. So people just don't know what's going on, teachers, principals. So a first priority would be to please involve the people who know the schedule the best and will be most impacted by living it on a daily basis. If that can't happen and a schedule is just going to be designed and imposed, then go ahead and do that. So at least we know what the schedule is and we can start planning. I don't think it's too late to collaborate with us and have input if that's what you'd like to do. That is our first choice. But either way, I think at this point, we need to know the schedule for next year. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. So next on our agenda, we have our vote on three charter school renewals. We've previously received information and discussed these items at our last meeting. We had presentations from the schools. So tonight we're purely voting on it unless there's any additional discussion from the board. So the board will now consider Resolution Number 5073, Resolution approving the request for the extension of the charter agreement with the Emerson Public Charter School. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Director Belial moves and Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5073. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen, citizen comment?
There is not.
And any board discussion? All right. So the board will now vote on Resolution 5073. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. And so great. Resolution 5073 is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Emerson. Next, we're going to consider Resolution Number 5074, which is a resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with LeMond Immersion for the operation of LeMond French Immersion Public Charter School. And do I again have a motion?
So move.
All right. Director Belial moves and Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5074. Any citizen comment? None. Any board discussion? All right, hearing none. The board will now vote on Resolution 5074. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? So this Resolution 5074 is also approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
Wonderful. Congratulations to LeMond. And then finally, the board will consider Resolution Number 5075, which is a resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with SEI for the operation of SEI Academy Public Charter School. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Director Belial moves.
Second.
And Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5075. Citizen comment? None. Discussion? None. All right. So now we'll vote on Resolution 5075. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Resolution 5075 is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, SEI. So thank you again to Krista Miles, our Charter Schools Manager, for all her great work and to all our charter schools for all their excellent work with our students. So thank you all for your patience and hard work throughout this process. We're excited to see this come to a conclusion for this year.
Congratulations.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we have Step Three Complaint, voting on a resolution. So on March 30th, 2015, the board voted to consider a Step Three Complaint. And then at our last meeting on April 20th, the board discussed the complaint. So we do have a resolution that is based on the discussion. But first I wanted Superintendent Smith to have the opportunity for any comments.
And I'm actually going to take the opportunity to walk us through the steps. At our, the discussion in our last board meeting suggested confusion around what steps had actually occurred earlier in the complaint. So I'm just going to walk through the, the entire complaint. This is the first time, and I acknowledge Ms. Horn, last meeting, she's the first person to actually take a complaint all the way through our new complaint process. And so I think just valuable for all of us to understand what happened all the way through. And then tonight where we're voting on the resolution, that is the board's resolution to address the complaint. So again, wanted to thank Ms. Horn for working through the complaint process from start to finish and for your perseverance in hanging with us as we did this. So as I mentioned last week, it's our first Step Three Complaint with the new policy and administrative directive. So on December 10th, 2014, the complainant filed her formal complaint under the complaint policy and Greg Wallach, the district's Title IX Coordinator, was assigned to review that complaint. The complaint at the time was about the different start times for boys and girls varsity games. The complaint alleged that the 6:30 time slot when the girls played was not prime time and that the eight o'clock time slot that the boys had was prime time. The complaint alleged that this was a clear violation of Title IX. On January 13th, 2015, Mr. Wallach issued his report within a mutually agreed-upon extension due to winter break. So part of our complaint policy really has very established timelines that each, that everything occurs within. So if we're going to be, you know, off by any amount of time, then we mutually agree to the adjustment in the timeframe. As part of his investigation, Mr. Wallach reached out to the Oregon School Activities Association and was told that any games after six o'clock are considered prime time. In addition, the OSAA's Title IX guidance acknowledges that when determining compliance, a district-wide program assessment is needed, including opportunity to participate, attracting media coverage, playing in front of spectators and developing a strong overall program. Because he found that the 6:30 game time did constitute prime time play and because of concerns regarding spectators, Mr. Wallach recommended that game times remain the same and that spectator attendance be counted and tracked to inform the 2015-16 schedule development. Then on January 22nd, the complainant requested a review in writing by the superintendent pursuant to Step Two of the complaint resolution process. I then designated Rudy Rudolph as the superintendent's designee for purposes of reviewing the Step Two request for review. The complainant raised a new concern regarding loss of instructional time for JV girls because of transportation and early starts. While our process would normally require this additional concern to be addressed at Step One, so it would have to have started over and gone through the process, I asked Ms. Rudolph to go ahead and investigate the loss of instructional time as part of the complaint. On February 20th, I issued my response to the Step Two request for review. As part of her review, Mrs. Rudolph had again reached out to OSAA and other athletic directors from across the state and Washington. Again, Ms. Rudolph determined that the 6:30 start times did constitute prime time. She recommended that for the 2015-16 season, the district pilot a different schedule of girls varsity playing the later time slot for two games and keeping track of attendance. She also recommended that high schools needed to ensure that their bus schedules did not disproportionately require any early dismissal of any team. I concur, concurred with both of those recommendations. On March 9th, the complainant then requested an appeal by the Board of Education. In addition to the issues of prime time slots and loss of instructional time, the complainant also raised concerns regarding the PIL showcase, which this past year was only open to boys teams. This last issue was not investigated as part of the complaint. The board determined that they would accept the appeal, accept the appeal on March 30th of the superintendent's decision. And then on April 20th, the board discussed the substance of the appeal at that meeting. In the meantime, the basketball coaches and athletic directors have been meeting to finalize the schedule for next year. There were four major concerns that they were trying to address, some of those that were raised as part of the complaint and some that were not. Number one, having games scheduled on Tuesday, Thursday and Friday instead of traditional Tuesday and Friday caused confusion for coaches and parents. Number two, four-game stack nights, one game after another, were problematic with the boys varsity starting games very late. Because of, number three, because of three-game weeks, students missed instructional time. This disproportionately affected the JV girls' basketball teams. And number four, low attendance for the girls' games. The proposed recommendations for the 2015-16 schedule are the following. Number one, Tuesday nights, single-gender games where each gender plays together as a program and both varsity teams play at 7:30 at opposite sites. Two, Friday nights will be the same thing, except that for four games per season, we will have a three-stack schedule with two late boys varsity games and two late girl varsity games per site. Number three, bus schedules will be developed in collaboration with the athletics department to ensure that there's not a disproportionate loss of instructional time. Number four, we are already planning for showcase events for both girls' and boys' basketball teams and beginning in 2015-16, every PIL varsity sport will have a showcase event. So again, addressed, went ahead and addressed the concern. The schedule both addresses the concerns raised in the complaint as well as by the coaches and athletic departments. So I think mostly what I wanted to demonstrate there is just the complexity of attention to the complaint, all the complaint process, all the way through and people engaging to work to address the substance of the complaint. Over to you.
Thank you so much. So the board will now consider Resolution Number 5076, a resolution in response to Step Three Complaint. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Director Morton moves and Director Belial seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5076. Ms. Houston, do you have any public comment?
We do have one. Allison Horn.
Welcome, Ms. Horn. Come on down. You were here earlier for the three-minute piece and you've been here before, so welcome back. Glad you're here.
Okay. Thanks for letting me be here again. As I sit here tonight on day 139 and reflect back to December when I filed the complaint, I thought it was a pretty simple question. Would the participants in both the boys' and girls' basketball programs accept as fair and equitable the overall program of the other? In other words, would it be okay for the JV boys' team to play all of its stacked games at 3:45 or 4:00? Would it be okay for the JV boys to miss a disproportionate amount of instructional time because of when their games were scheduled? Would it be okay for the boys' varsity team to play all of their stacked games at 5:45 or 6:30? And would it be okay for the boys to be excluded from the PIL showcase? When the answers were so clearly no, as it was with the 2014-15 schedule, I thought it would be a no-brainer. I expected that the administration would review the schedule, see the obvious issues that it created, then take prompt and effective steps to eliminate the discrimination, prevent it from reoccurring and as appropriate remedy its effects. And with almost one month prior to the start of the regular season in January, I actually thought that change would happen in the 2014-15 season. Fast forward four months and eighteen days later, despite stonewalling all the way through the complaint process that there wasn't a problem, wasn't an issue, and even after being directed by the board to implement an equitable schedule in 2015-16, the administration is still trying to spin the facts in the April 24th memo. The administration submits that they are thrilled with their progress, that they are now looking into practice schedules, that they are already planning to incorporate PIL showcase events for boys and girls. Since this was the first year of the reestablished PIL, there was no longstanding practice or history to contend with. It was a clean slate. The administration had every opportunity to create an equitable schedule from the start. Instead, the administration created the 2014-15 schedule, ignored repeated concerns and complaints, refused to acknowledge the issues that were repeatedly brought to their attention and systematically refused to take any action to remedy the situation until the Board of Education directed them to do so. Up to that point, throughout the entire complaint process, administrator after administrator failed to acknowledge the schedule as the issue. As a result, the steps proposed by the Title IX Coordinator, Investigator, Superintendent to address the issue were simply insufficient. It's not about counting the number of spectators. It's not about a two-game pilot schedule. It's not about evaluating the bus schedules. The issue is about creating a schedule that provides equal opportunities for all student athletes. And of course, since athletics is another part of the education system, the issues are broader and more complex than just the basketball schedule, which is why I am so grateful that the board has directed an audit for the entire athletics program. And so on day 139, I am grateful to the Board of Education for taking action to ensure that all students will have equal opportunities to benefit from sports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So is there any board discussion on Resolution 5076? I will just point out that we have a revised version and, Roseanne, is there, is this version available up in the back for folks? Okay, great. So the revised version has, and it resolved number one at the very beginning. I'll just read what's the addition. It's resolve number one. "The complainant raised concerns under Title IX. The board takes the obligations under Title IX extremely seriously and agrees with the concerns raised by the complainant." "The board therefore directs the superintendent," and it goes on from there with the original version. So the direction is to implement the jet schedule that's being- So the direction is to implement the schedule that's been created by the athletics department for the 2015-16 year, as described by Superintendent Smith earlier, and addressing the not having disproportionately require early dismissal or any loss of instructional time. And then the third resolved is that the board directs the audit committee to include an audit of athletics as part of the work plan for the performance auditor. So I'll just, so any discussion or comments before we vote? Director Regan.
So I am very grateful, Ms. Horn, for you bringing this forward, and I'm grateful to the board for responding the way we have. I'm looking at, the Board of Education directs the audit committee to include an audit, and I'm trying to figure out exactly where that came from, because I believe that we typically ask the audit committee to consider an audit and as part of a broader conversation. So if we want to direct this, I want to make sure that we have funding to do a potential fourth audit. So I just want to be clear that that might be a possibility. So typically with the audit committee, when we're looking at audit suggestions, we get recommendations from all of the board members and some staff, principals, teachers, whoever it might be, and we come forward with a whole list of potential audit recommendations for the year. So what I'm a little bit concerned about is us lacking in one, when we haven't even had the discussion yet. So as long as we understand that if we're directing an audit of athletics as part of this, that it might be a fourth audit, I'm happy with it. So I just want to make that clear.
I guess from my perspective, it wouldn't predetermine the number. I think it's been pretty clear that everyone on the board wanted this audit to be included in that, so I don't think we can predetermine the final number, but.
Well, we have a budget for the audit committee. I want to make sure that the budget would accommodate a fourth.
But thank you for pointing out that that's a potential trade-off with other topics, but to me it was.
So I just want to make sure that we all understand that we may be doing a fourth audit, so.
Or we may not be able to, depending on the budget. I think that's a decision we'll have to make, so thank you for pointing out that there's a potential trade-off here. I don't know what the list is going to be, or when it's, when we're going to see it.
Well, it's unusual for the board to direct an audit without a little bit more discussion.
I think just this reflects your discussion at the last meeting. You can either include it or not include it.
Well, I thought it was going to be a recommendation that we look at this in that context.
So you could revise it to reflect it differently if you would like to.
Well, I think we want to ask the audit committee to consider it as part of our audit schedule next year. It may be, again, part of what we do when we look at audits is we, we come up with ideas, and then we narrow those down as a board is typically what we do. And then when we have the auditor with us, the auditor will come through and will say, oh my God, that audit's so big, it's going to chew up the entire budget, or that audit's something that we could really handle with a review instead, or an expedited process or something. So all I want to do is just make sure that we understand that there's some flexibility built in here, and the possibility that if there are other audits that come up as higher in terms of, you know, educational vision for the district or something, that, that we would include this, but understand that it might be in addition to some of the other things. So that's all.
And I'd say fair enough, I just, again, ultimately, the board is the one that decides what the audit topics are going to be, and we've made it pretty clear we want this to be one, so, I mean, appreciate having the audit committee come back to us with a full list, but.
Well, and I have to say, I'm not sure what a audit of the athletic, audit of athletics even means. I mean, I guess I had figured that we would look at an audit of our Title IX compliance. So as part of this complaint, it would make more sense to me to look at Title IX. So it's just the way it's written. I have some concerns. It's not that I don't want to be moving forward with this discussion, I just have some concerns the way it's written. I don't know what an audit of athletics means. I mean, this was a Title IX complaint.
I think that's what the audit committee would come back to us with the detail on. All we're giving here is the direction that this is something that we would like to have the audit committee, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we're all agreeing on the flexibility and that we're going to, the audit committee is going to examine this once we have the performance auditor on board and figure out the parameters and scope and come back. So, Director.
Buell.
Yeah, no, yeah, I know, Steve, sorry, Director Buell. Go ahead.
I like having an audit of the athletic department, but I also like having included in that same audit, very likely, an audit of other programs that we have to make sure we have equity with males and females within the school district. I'm not, we're doing CTE and so forth coming forward. We've got various other things that I think we need to look at with that, so I think that this, it'd be great, send this to the audit committee and then have them bring it back to the board with a, with their suggestion better than doing it here. I have to agree with Bobby about the audit of athletics, I'm not sure exactly what that is. We could shake that out, I guess, but I'd like to see it broader than that. And I'd like to also thank Ms. Horn for coming forward on this, and, and even though we wouldn't allow anybody to ask questions of her last week, which I felt was an abomination of.
It's actually in accordance with our policy, but I know you didn't agree with that.
Yeah, I know, it was an abomination of our process here at the school board, but I've been through those before, it's just another one, but I, I'd certainly like to see an amendment on this that would send the audit committee to say, yeah, let's audit athletics, but do we want to include anything else in an audit?
I think rather than.
We need to discuss it someplace. We're willing to discuss this in length tonight, more than happy to.
So what I would suggest, colleagues, is that, that we just replace the word include with explore, and that, that allows us to have the process that Director Regan is chair of the audit committee describes. Will that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so with that, the board will now vote, any further, I'm sorry, any further discussion or comments? Yeah, Director Belial.
I'll just say, I, I was trying to be clear at the last meeting that I do think it includes athletics, it might also include something like, athletics to me also includes how they are with cheer, support, or band, so there might be other things. So I don't want, I just want to be clear that my saying yes to the amended resolution doesn't mean that in any way I'm backing off, like, I actually don't mind, you could come to a list of 20 fantastic audits, this is going to be one that I consistently vote for, so however it comes up.
Yeah, I think it's a good one.
Okay, okay, so, so now the board will vote on resolution 5076. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Now opposed. All right, resolution 5076 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Jazz Wall voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much to everybody, and look forward to moving forward and making some progress on this issue. And thank you to all our awesome athletes, especially the young women who are here and waited all through a long evening. We have a few more hours to go if you'd like to hang out, but thank you so much. Go do your homework, you're right. And rest up for your next game. Thank you so much.
Or AP or IB.
All right. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a quarterly update from our workload committee. This is just one of the many topics on the board's annual work plans. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
Good, so Sean Murray, who's our Chief Human Resources Officer, Brock Logan, Director of Labor Relations, and Suzanne Cohen, Vice President of the Portland Association of Teachers, will give us an update on the workload committee.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, board members, I'm Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. As part of the 2013-2016 collective bargaining agreement between the district and the PAT, a workload committee has been established to consider options for eliminating aspects of current workload for professional educators. The workload committee is comprised of PAT members and district administrators that meet and review workload concerns and forward recommendations to Assistant Superintendent of School Performance for consideration. This is the first, fourth quarterly update provided to the board this year. The meetings, the committee meetings take place twice a month, generally the first Wednesday of each month from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and the third Thursday of each month from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The next workload committee meeting is scheduled for May 6, 2015. At this time, I will turn it over to two of our workload committee members, Brock Logan, who is our Director of Labor Relations, and Suzanne Cohen, who is Vice President for PAT. Oh, excuse me, and also Carol Campbell, who is the principal for Grant High School, is here also as a member of the workload committee.
So just quickly add, other than what's in the memo that came with it, we have, I just wanted to give an up-to-date, we have the request for review form that individual educators can fill out to have their workload requests concerned, or considered, and to date, we've had approximately 50 of those. And I say approximately, we've had 47 of them that have been submitted on our online form, but while we were getting that up and running, we had, I can't remember now, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of three to six that had come in on paper that we've considered. And so two of those are new since the last committee meeting, and we're still working on them.
And is, is that for fiscal year ending '15? It's not looking forward for next year yet, is that correct? That's just for current fiscal?
Those are the requests that have come in since the committee got up and running, total, yes.
Right, so I would say that might be the first issue the workload committee is having is a little bit of a workload. Some of it is that just managing the database, and we, there could be some changes in that. We also don't have any sort of administrative assistant services, and so the, the process from receiving a form, making sure we're communicating back, tracking our recommendation, where it is, is it happening, has definitely been a little problematic and difficult, especially as more and more of these come in, because sometimes, you know, we, we try one thing or we're investigating, and then we have to revisit, so we could definitely use some support in that department. Our committee had basically like two charges in our contract, and I think we're doing a really good job of one of them, but we need to work on the other one. So one is reviewing workload requests from individual members, and I think we've, that's exactly what we've been spending our time doing. The other is looking more at big picture issues and considering options for eliminating current workload and offsetting new workload created by new mandates, and we really haven't gotten to do a lot of big picture stuff. Most of our individual workload requests are from kindergarten teachers, either students with special needs or safety issues, a lot of special ed caseload issues, class size, synergy support. And then one problem we've had is a little lapse in implementation with some of our decisions, especially around educational assistance. So our committee will recommend a hiring of an EA that gets approved, and then I think due to a couple different problems, that EA maybe still doesn't exist. One of those, one of it might be in terms of communication and streamlining that process so the administrator understands that, you know, they need to hire from the pool. I think there's also been a shortage in availability to hire educational assistance. So in many of the cases where we've recommended, none actually got hired, or they're still trying now. Next year, we, we do have a recommendation to start the year off with a pool of six educational assistants to kind of offset this so that we could place them in our most dire workload situation needs, and we have a subcommittee that's kind of looking at like what would be the best place to start this off, so when we remove them from where workload issues came up, it was done with the least disruption and in a way that's fair. We've also dealt with some issues that really have, not a solution that the workload committee can take on. One of the biggest ones has been a workload issue from Lincoln High School due to overcrowding. I think our committee completely agreed that it was a workload issue because the teachers don't have a space to go to to do their prep work. So we kind of did try to explore some options, like renting a space across the building or what, but it, that's just a problem that our committee is not ready to take on. Also, just, we've had the lack of subs for educational assistance or teachers or anything has not been really an issue that the workload committee has set up to take on. We've also had some budget implementation issues. When we voted and you matched to fund principals' consolidated funds, that was a way to reach and alleviate workload for many of our members, but there's certain groups that we still have not figured out a way to give any workload relief money to, special ed special programs, special schools, Head Start. So I think in the, the future, moving forward, it would be good to look at more big system stuff and make recommendations in that department, and we haven't, we have some new cases that we haven't really been looked at around, new mandates from the state, and what can we do to offset those workload.
It's been a good experience working in partnership with PAT. So Suzanne and I have had the opportunity to work together, which is, which has been great, so I've appreciated that. And hearing, hearing about problems in the elementary schools with overcrowding and the workload issue that some of the kindergarten and first grade teachers are experiencing was really eye-opening as well, so I appreciated the opportunity.
Any questions?
Questions, four minutes, Director Buell.
How much of the million dollars have you spent so far? I would assume.
I don't know that we can answer that, because the problem hiring the EAs, which has probably been the biggest expense, is, while it was funded in some cases quite some time ago, we haven't hired anybody, so we haven't spent that money. And I know that we have, I think, at least two of the EAs that are in place now. I know we had a situation where one, where the job was offered to somebody and they declined it, so that was the problem of filling it. So I can't tell you to the dollar what we spent so far.
The difficulty that I'm having with the workload committee is the timeline. I mean, it's almost May. I would assume that the workload committee would have gotten workload help out there in the end of October, first of November at the latest. I don't know what's causing that holdup. I mean, I, I know you had to organize, so next year, do you think the timeline will move up to the first of November when we can get? I mean, it doesn't do much good to help somebody with their workload when they've had it all year and we're now in the May, and we're still trying to figure out how to hire EAs, which don't take a, EAs don't take a certificate or anything, do they?
They do require to be highly qualified, so.
You have to, to be an EA, you have to have, what, what do you have to have?
I believe it's two years of college, or an associate's degree, or there's a test I believe you can pass.
And we can't find people with two years of college or can pass a test? I, I mean, I don't, it just seems to me like the timelines, and I realize it was brand-new this year, and it was great. I mean, I, it was one of the things that I looked at coming out of the contract, is this is wonderful, this is great, we're going to get some help out there with our teachers, and we've still got a lot of problems, and it's, and we're looking at more things coming in, and it's almost May. For me, it just doesn't seem like, yeah, it's been a nice thing to do, but gee, my knee, timeline-wise, it just didn't, maybe we should have met every day or something, or, I don't know. I mean, can you help me with that, somebody? I don't know.
What I can say, Director Buell, is that, to paraphrase Suzanne, it's a, it's the workload committee, it's not the workload department. We don't have a staff. We don't have, I mean, everybody who comes to that committee has their job that they do.
Isn't the HR department in charge of helping the workload committee? I mean, isn't that the staff? We've got a workload committee, we've got all these people coming together, and we have nobody who's assigned to help them? Isn't, wouldn't that be the HR department assigned to help that workload committee?
So Director Buell, yes, the HR department is helping staff the workload committee. However, in regards to the timing of getting positions filled and so forth, you know, first the workload committee had to start up in terms of how they were going to address workload issues.
Right, I figured that'd slow down this year, right? It won't be next year.
Right. Additionally, in terms of dealing with the pool of EAs, I mean, essentially, EAs were hired for the year. The workload committee came with recommendations later on. I mean, essentially, we were already in the process of starting to look at hiring teachers. I mean, essentially, so next year, the workload committee has recommended a pool of EAs which will be prepared to address.
Did they have, how much money have we spent out of the million dollars this year? Does the HR department know that?
I don't have the figure off the top of my head. As Brock indicated earlier, we have, we have positions that have been allocated, but we haven't been able to fill some of those positions, but we can get those numbers to you next week.
You got to guess.
I don't like guessing, Director Buell. I can provide that information to you and give you factual information.
Can we have that in the board meeting, provide that to the board meeting next week?
We can get a written report to the board.
Okay, that would be good. I appreciate that. I'm not, I'm not trying to be real negative, because this is a wonderful thing, but it is almost May, and we have all these teachers, we, I mean, the, the major complaint by the Portland Association of Teachers down the line, from my point of view, and we spent 10 months arguing with them and so forth and so forth and so on, the major complaint was workload problems, and so it's May and we didn't.
Can I offer two, two things? One was, I've been at almost all of the workload committee meetings, and they're, you know, they're, you know, they're. they're, you know, they're three-hour meetings. And in the beginning, we didn't have a lot of workload requests, because people didn't know about the process, and we were, you know, getting the forms together and kind of figuring out what, what it would look like for this committee to make a decision around placing someone additionally in a classroom or in a building. So there's that piece. It took us, it took, once we got PAT to some, reach out to members and sent the link to the forms, and then all of a sudden, we're inundated with a lot of workload requests. And each request, it's not simply we discuss it and make a decision, some require some investigation and research and data. So if a teacher asks for support, then we sometimes have to go back and, in between that meeting and our next meeting, and people in the committee take on the responsibility of getting the data. So is this, is this, is this typical for a first-grade classroom, for the teacher to have this many students and one EA and this many special ed students? And some of them are really super-specific, like this teacher has three students that haven't been di, or haven't been tested yet, and they require some additional support, and we have to go back and find out, well, are they, are they going to be tested, or is this in the works? So a lot of that stuff took, I think next year will be more streamlined, definitely, but the process, this process just lends itself to, sometimes it does take a little time, so.
Maybe they need to take and hire, use some of that million dollars to hire a person to go out and help with the investigation and to help with putting it all together.
Well, I agree with Suzanne, some clerical support.
That would make, that would make some sense to me, you know? Pay somebody fifty thousand, seventy thousand, a million to go out there and answer those questions.
You want the first dollars out of this to be spent on administration, this intended aim.
Evidently, that appears to me to be what almost we need to be doing.
Maybe a consultant.
Sometimes when you have, sometimes administrators are pretty good. We have a guy who runs the, all the finance, and we have a superintendent, maybe we need an administrator in this case. Sometimes maybe you don't need him, but in this case, maybe, maybe we need somebody.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, Director Morton?
So I do actually agree with a bunch of what Director Buell is saying. I've, I think, I don't know if this is our third, is this our third presentation from the?
Fourth.
Fourth presentation. And each time, I'm, I'm kind of left hoping that there was more. And a part of it was, and I don't want to, you know, I'm not casting aspersions, I'm not suggesting that this is not a challenge, certainly. But I am, I similarly felt like this was an option, opportunity for us as a district to work closely with our, with our teachers' union to discuss clearly and create definitions around how to, how to address workload concerns within our schools. And I know it takes time, but I'm also impatient about that. And, and hoping that we can, you know, perhaps, I don't know what we can do to light a fire and to say, we need to, we need to expedite this a little bit more, we need to put either some more effort to it, or find, I don't, I don't know what the optics would be to, to identify someone to, to work for the workload committee. I'm not sure that's the message we want to deliver, but we gotta, we gotta do something. And I think, I think May is too late. I really do. I think we should have been addressing these issues earlier in the year. And I don't need an explanation, I just wanted to, to share that as a, as a comment.
I guess I, I just want to say that there is a lot to highlight that the workload committee has accomplished. That's been really wonderful, despite the individual cases. And I think had we been able to hire EAs, I mean, when the teachers first got the call many, many months ago, that they were getting one, it seemed like a great workload relief. I think in our funds report, there should probably be two, like what we intended to spend and what we've actually spent. But there are many things to highlight, and I would also say we did approach some system problems that seem to be getting resolved in the future budget, and that was maybe one of the bigger systems things. I mean, having someone from the Special Education Department, when so many workload forms were around SED, and they were able to investigate or maybe deal with them right away before it even needed to come to the committee. And then I think resolving that need for set-aside money for the SED department next year, so that that didn't have to come out of the workload committee, I think all of those were worthwhile. I know we're scoffing at the idea that the workload committee might need to hire someone, but I don't think it's someone that needs to work full-time, but we're a committee of ten that all have full-time and then some jobs, and.
I'm familiar with committees like that, yeah.
But I mean, there's a system of note-taking and correspondence and filing, and we've taken on a lot of that ourselves in data and record-keeping. And I mean, it started slow when we were creating systems, and it worked out, but as we started getting ten to twenty cases to review, you know, at a meeting, it really, the clerical part is becoming overwhelming, and I imagine that'll keep going. Not all our cases are resolved, many are still investigations, we've added new columns, but it, you know, I just don't want to make light of the fact that we are struggling with that piece.
Thank you.
And I would also point, you know, in the memo, it does talk about two kind of bigger, broader, so one was talked about as the pool of six EAs. Also, we had made the committee come up with a recommendation for addressing substitutes for campus moderators and educational assistants, and that is being addressed in the budget. You also heard some conversation about synergy support. You may remember that in a previous report, we suggested that the board require, whenever anybody comes forward with a new, whether it's a technology upgrade or anything like that, that a part of that project include what is the training, what is the plan for training and addressing the workload, both of immediate implementation and then also ongoing, because obviously, you know, the workload implications of learning a new system, the first year are greater than they are carrying out that system over time. But that those be addressed as part of the project, so that it doesn't come up as this afterthought of, okay, great, we got this brand-new system in, and it's working, it's great, except people still have to work out the bugs and figure out how to, in the case of synergy, put grades in different, and some, several other things. So there are some of the big-picture items. And I would just add that what doesn't maybe come out in these reports and can't necessarily is that these committee meetings are often, actually, I would call them fun, believe it or not, and they're, and I would say the meetings are productive. We have really good discussion, and we are working really well together. So there is this piece of, you know, once we make a decision, let's do this, figuring out, how do we make this happen? And we're still working through those bugs, and we may need some help. But this is a good committee, we're doing good work and having great conversations.
Right. Director Reagan.
So I had two questions I wanted to ask about. The first is, as the committee made the recommendations, the district told a pool of six centrally allocated FTE. That's for the go-forward budget, right? And we have that in there, yes? So those funds will not come out of the one million dollars allocated for this committee next year? So to me, that's a really big deal that this committee accomplished? Am I understanding this correctly?
I think there's two different things. So in the PPS general, or I forget which budget, there's the substitute pool of five EAs, which we may argue is not enough.
Right.
But then from the workload committee, we are making a recommendation that we have six EAs hired with workload funds that we can use to provide like roving support. And kind of, it's our attempt to troubleshoot the issue we've had this year, where we wanted to hire six EAs and have two at this point.
But you go ahead and hire them at the get-go, and we hold the pool, so that we're able to be responsive when issues come up.
So those would be in addition to the five in your budget, then?
Right.
And then we would, so out of the million that you'll have for next year, you'll be hiring, we'll be hiring six.
Six EAs, right.
EAs from that, right from the get-go. So that's great, okay. So that was one of the things. So that, I mean, to me, seems like huge progress, I mean, from what I can tell. So the other thing is, a few months ago, you all recommended, or you put out into the field six hun, three hundred thousand dollars to increase consolidated budgets for principals, and we matched that. So that was six hundred thousand that went out into the field for consolidated budgets. So again, that was another big, a big deal for schools. My question is, in your current budget go-forward, is that six hundred thousand still in that? Have we increased the consolidated budget for principals by that amount going forward? Or?
It's in the, so we had the budget proposal in two parts, actually in three parts. So, and it, that is in the part three. So if, in fact, the state goes to seven point five billion, then the, doing the same level of increase to the consolidated budget is included in, in, in the budget. I'm hopeful that we'll actually get there, so.
Okay. Okay, any other, Director Blah?
I just wanted to say thank you for your work, and I appreciate the dialogue even here tonight, because oftentimes, we hear of complaints of this workload, why can't somebody fix it? Somebody just address it? And you've been wrestling with all the data that needs to be collected about figuring out whether it's an anomaly, is this something that's normal, is this something that's system-wide? Should we be looking at? There are a lot of challenges to go into trying to figure out whether or not that's a workload issue. So I appreciate the difficult discussion. I too would love to, and it sounds like you all would love to have more people in the field already, and the challenges that come with that. The fact of the matter is, is I get to work with districts across the county, and there is a hiring shortage, that people are looking for qualified teachers and educational assistants, that people, for whatever reason, probably because of the recession earlier, found other jobs. So there aren't a lot of folks just sitting out there looking for education jobs. So I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the work. I'm glad to hear that you're feeling it's positive and that you're surfacing the issues that need to be brought, because I do think that that was the intent or the hope for this group, so that we wouldn't wind up hearing about them some, some other time and being surprised by them. So thanks.
Director Buell.
I just hope that what money we don't spend this year will carry over to this group next year, right? So next year can be one point two million if they only spend eight hundred thousand?
It actually doesn't, so we don't do, the things that carry over from one budget year to the next are primarily capital projects or like purchases that you, that aren't specific to a year, like.
Where would the money go? They, they, we had a million, we had a million dollars budgeted for them this year.
Here's what I'll tell you, everybody would want to carry over any money they don't spend from one year to the next. So like, we're really clear about what, we have clear guidelines about what things carry over. They have a million dollars again budgeted for next year, so.
Where does that two hundred thousand that they wouldn't spend this year?
It goes into our ending fund balance.
Goes where?
Into our ending fund balance, so essentially into our beginning fund balance for next year.
So next year, we could move it then, at the start of the year, two hundred thousand back in here to continue the, because they should have two million dollars under two years, not a, not a million, not one point eight million, I mean, that was our agreement.
There are many people who would love us to apply that logic to their budgets, and let us carry.
I don't know about their other budget, but I'm applying.
But yes, could you bring it up next year and say you want to add additional money to it?
I'm applying that logic to the, to the contract that we did with the teachers. I'm not applying it to somebody up here in this building or somebody out in a school district, but I'm applying it to the contract we did, which is totally different than any other budgeting thing we would do that I can see. I don't know why it wouldn't carry over, it would seem to me to carry over for sure.
The funding piece is not addressed in the collective bargaining agreement.
The million dollars is.
Correct.
So if they didn't spend a million this year, they still had the money to spend on workload. That's the way I look at it. And so you got the million, you go a million, million, how long is it, three-year contract? Million, million, million was the contract. So if you go a million, and then you don't spend it, part of that should go a million the next year, then you should spend that, because you got three million dollars under the contract to spend.
So two things, one is, there's nothing in the contract that addresses funding for the workload committee. That was a budget issue, not a collective bargaining issue. And even if, even if we're in the third, we're, we're going to be entering the third year, so because when we got the contract done, this year was the second year of the three-year agreement.
But isn't that, isn't the million dollars in there contractually? Isn't it written into the contract, million dollars a year, isn't that written in?
No, actually, in negotiations, the PAT rejected that concept.
So that, so there was no money set aside in the contract for this committee?
Correct.
So where'd they get the million dollars? We just out of kindness gave it to them?
We budgeted for a million, a million dollars.
Kindness gave them to them because we thought it was a good idea, so.
Yes, we did.
Next year, we could give them none? Is that how we're interpreting the contract?
Superintendent Smith is just saying it's in the budget.
This is totally confusing to me, I'm totally confused.
So we put a, we did put a million dollars in the budget for the workload committee.
Okay. But that wasn't contractual?
It was not.
So we just did it out of the goodness of our hearts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't in agreement with the teachers?
I think agreement was the workload.
I only brought the second page of the workload contract that highlighted our charges, so I can't respond to this right now, I don't know.
So I just, thank you.
And I, yeah, I don't know specifically, we'll, we'll get you the workload language.
And it seems like, just to wrap up, I mean, a lessons learned, and, you know, looking forward would be, would be great. I just want to say how much I appreciate and how just inspiring it is to see this group be so collegial and collaborative, if that was the intent, and to see it, even though there's maybe challenges along the way, but just to see that happening in spirit of the group, and what you've accomplished and what you're doing together is really great. So that was one of the great things that came out of the contract settlement, and I'm looking forward to seeing the good work continue, so thank you so much.
I'd just add too, like, I think part of the concept we had coming out of bargaining was that this was going to be about being able to be responsive quickly, which is the million-dollar idea. But it was also about doing problem-solving when things came up that didn't necessarily have a monetary thing, like could we, could collectively come up with other ideas about how you solve issues and be more responsive, and make recommendations to the budget, which you have and which are now reflected in the budget. So in terms of, and where you did come up with things like the add-to-the-consolidated budgets, which allow at a building level, for the building to be more responsive to things that are occurring individually in buildings, that also leveraged an investment from the board, I mean, those are all, I think, significant, different kinds of ability to be responsive to issues or identifying the schools in a way that we were not doing prior to having the committee. So I just want to appreciate you for the multifaceted ways you've come at the work. So thank you.
Thanks for your work and all the.
Director Reagan.
So I'd also appreciate it, Superintendent, if you would survey the principals on the six hundred thousand dollars that was allocated in terms of additional consolidated funds, because the impression I had was that that made a huge difference in individual buildings and specifically around workload issues at individual buildings. And so if that's not in the go-forward budget, I think we might want to consider that. So I guess I, I would like to understand how those funds were used at the individual building level, you know, at, I'm not asking for, you know, but globally, how were those funds used, and should we be looking at increasing that general amount in term, because it, it seems like this committee is trying to address, you know, one-z, two-z issues, you haven't really gotten to the broader questions. But at the building level, it seemed like that gave our principals a real opportunity to address some of the issues quickly. And so it may be that over time, you know, that's the direction we move in, I don't know. But I would like to have more information on how the funds were used kind of globally.
And that's a good tee-up for our budget discussions over the next couple of meetings, so great.
I was going to say, I would appreciate that, because that was something that I always meant to do, was follow up and just kind of make sure the funds were being used to relieve workload, and I didn't get around to doing that. So I've definitely heard some great stories and real collaboration, and then we've also gotten a few concerns, like, you know, is this how to use the money to relieve workload? So, but I mean, I didn't have any official data to follow up with that and see the effectiveness of that.
Well, thank you all so, thank you all so much for your work and for all those hours of meetings. We really appreciate it, on top of all the work that you already do every day, your day jobs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, we have a pretty, I think, quick and straightforward item we had discussed last week, a resolution just stating our support of the Safe Routes to School program, which we, is one of our great partners, and they're advocating for additional funding, and we wanted to support that effort. So the board will now consider Resolution Number 5077, a resolution in support of Safe Routes to School program. Do I have a motion? Director Morton moves, and Director Buell seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5077. Any public comment?
No.
Any discussion? Hearing none. The board will now vote on Resolution 5077. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes? No opposed or abstentions, so Resolution 5077 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Jaswala voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and yay, Safe Routes to Schools. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have a long agenda tonight, but we are moving along. We have, on page eighteen of our business agenda, we have Resolution 5078, which has been submitted by the Audit Committee. It's an audit of administrative compensation. And before we consider the resolution, I wanted to give Superintendent Smith the opportunity to offer her comments.
Which I would love to do. So, and this has been a topic of conversation, both amongst the board and some of the broader community and part of the campaign dialogue, so I wanted to weigh in before the resolution. So I believe that a third-party performance review or performance audit of our compensation procedures and practices would be of value at this particular moment in time. I am particularly interested in having a third-party provide guidance regarding the aspects of job classification and compensation process. aspects of job classification and compensation processes that are part of the ongoing management responsibility of the superintendent and her staff, and the aspects that should be part of the governance and oversight responsibility of the board. In my role as superintendent, I'm charged with management of the district. I believe that individual compensation offers, compensation adjustments, and job reclassifications are part of the ongoing management of the district and are as such the responsibility of the superintendent and the human resources staff. I welcome the guidance of a third-party on this matter. Since conducting a third-party performance review or performance audit will take some time to complete, I also wanted to provide my perspective, as well as let you know what documents are and have been available online regarding this issue. Two years ago, as we were preparing to hire a new Chief Human Resources Officer, we conducted a third-party review of our human resources functions to inform our onboarding of the new Chief Human Resources Officer and provide him with a foundation for building a strategic plan for the department. One of the areas identified in that review as needing immediate attention was employee classification and compensation. Eighteen months ago, we hired a classification and compensation specialist. She has been charged with bringing internal alignment to our compensation system, as well as improving the market comparability for our positions. During the recession, our constrained budget had a differential impact on each of our employee groups, exacerbating the issues in our compensation structure. We have collective bargaining agreements with six different employee groups, as well as a group of non-represented employees. We have posted on our website the salary adjustments for all of our represented employee groups, district leadership, and non-represented employees dating back to the 2008, '09 fiscal year. Over this seven-year period, some of our represented groups received either steps, cost of living increases, or both steps and COLAs throughout this time. During the same time period, our non-represented employees and district leaders received far more conservative salary adjustments as opportunity allowed, and up to 10 furlough days. During this time, while we were cutting our budget and laying off staff, I prioritized students and teachers. I made a decision as superintendent to not accept salary increases. I also froze the salaries of my executive team. In a year with our most dramatic budget reductions, our building administrators, central office staff, and executive team all took between three to 10 furlough days and the corresponding 1.3 to 3.85 percent reduction in compensation in order to prioritize direct services to students. The board was well aware of this, it was publicly visible in the budget, as well as highly publicized. I'm proud of this decision. Not a single student lost a day of instruction, not a single teacher lost a day of salary. In budget after budget, as we made significant reductions to current service levels, the superintendent and the board expressed appreciation and gratitude to the groups of employees who sacrificed to maintain services to students and reduce the need for layoffs of our staff. We are one of the only districts in the state of Oregon that was able to maintain a full school year for students during this period. It was not the intention of the superintendent, nor do I believe that it was in the intention of the board, that these employees would continue to be undercompensated on an ongoing basis as the economy began to recover. As local unemployment rate has fallen and the economy has improved, the disparities between our salaries and those of our market competitors have only exacerbated our challenges to attract and retain a high-quality workforce. We've lost top talent to surrounding private companies, for example Nike, Cambia Health, Northwest Education Associates, to nonprofits, to governments, for example, the Oregon Department of Education in Multnomah County, and to other school districts, most notably Vancouver, Washington, who are able to offer attractively higher compensation for similar positions. We've offered positions to candidates that require them to take a significant pay cut in order to accept a position with PPS, for example Trimest and the City of Portland. Some of them, some of them have been able to take the cut and say yes, others were unable to do so, and we've lost the opportunity to add top talent to our organization. We've also had posted positions remain open for long periods of time due to compensation that is too low to attract the skill level and experience necessary for the position. As you know, we are also experiencing compression in the compensation system with salary ranges for job classifications that should be aligned for supervisory and career path purposes colliding. In some cases, accepting a promotion with more responsibility would result in only a minimal increase, reducing our ability to create a pipeline for progressive leadership opportunity within our own system. Over the past two years, and represented in the last two budgets, were changes to the building administrator salary structure that began to improve our market comparability and address the compression issues with teacher compensation, due to the fact that teachers receive steps and COLAs during a period that administrators did not. The salary proposal for licensed administrators included in this year's budget would bring our licensed administrators up to the 75th percentile of our comparison market. These are included in the superintendent's budget, budget proposal, which is posted online. As adjustments were made to licensed administrator positions, we needed to address the compression for senior directors who supervise principals. This is a progressive leadership position with an increased scope of responsibility that we want our building leaders to aspire to. The compensation needs to reflect that. Executive-level positions that had been frozen for most of the recession were adjusted this past year to regain internal alignment. All of these adjustments have been within established ranges for those job classifications which are posted online, and within the compensation rollup costs identified in the budget. One new hire was offered compensation outside the established range for the job classification. Finally, the key to the success of any organization is in the people who are part of it. At Portland Public Schools, we are fortunate to have extraordinary staff who work in all parts of our organization, both in our schools and supporting our schools. Our compensation must value both of those groups. We have people who have been extremely loyal in their service to our students and our district through thick and thin, throughout their professional careers. I want to again express gratitude and appreciation to our staff, who through years of budget reductions sacrificed to maintain our services to students, maintain a full school year, and reduce layoffs. We still have significant work ahead of us to establish a compensation system that does what we need it to do, attract and retain high-quality staff in all parts of our district. I welcome a third-party performance review or performance audit as one of the tools that helps to direct our efforts, as well as to bring clarity to the governance role of the board and the management role of the superintendent and her staff in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Smith. All right, so, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5078, Audit of Administrative Compensation. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Director Regan moves, and, is there a second?
Second.
And Director Buell seconds the motion.
What page are we on?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Ms. Susan, is there any public comment?
There is not.
So, board discussion.
So, Director Curler, so first of all, I appreciate your comment, and I've been letting my board colleagues know that you have been wanting to have an audit done, so I appreciate all of your comments, it's great. And I think that this amendment is brought forward in that same vein. So, Director Curler, a couple of weeks ago, brought forward a audit recommendation, a resolution for an audit. And what this board basically said was it would make more sense for an audit recommendation to come from the Audit Committee. And so we took that back to the Audit Committee and had a very long discussion last week. So that's what this is reflecting here. So the Audit Committee of the Board includes three board members. At this point, it's Pam Knowles, and myself, and two community members. Right now, the two community members have not yet been voted on, but they're both full-time auditors. One is a performance auditor, one is more of a financial auditor. So Carrie Guy and Pedro Nunez. So we looked at the, the suggested draft that had been passed by some public auditors, just to make sure it was in line with what we should be doing. Had a deep discussion, we removed many, many recitals that were in here to just make it pretty straightforward. And, so we're bringing this forward as a recommendation of the Audit Committee. As I've been talking about this with Director Atkins, we are, I think, you had a possible other recommendation, and I believe what we were looking at is potentially tabling this until next week, when we had the full board here, and I believe you had a substitute that you also wanted to look at. So, I think at this point, what we wanted to do was to table this for this week and bring it back next week, is what I understood that we had come up with. But we wanted to kind of get this out in the record, and I didn't know if you were also going to put yours on the record as well.
No, I think with, thank you, I think with Director Curler and Director Knowles absent tonight, that it did make sense to table it, and then we can just put it back on, and then we can see in light of the superintendent's comments, and once they're back in town, if they, I, what I, what I put out was an early draft, and what I basically was looking at is not, I don't support Resolution 5078, I appreciate the Audit Committee making their recommendation, but what I would, the only thing I would be able to support around this, given that the work that's already been done, is a much shorter, briefer, minimal recommendation to do the review along the lines that the superintendent described. So I'd want something along that, along those lines. But I, I appreciate the idea to table it until we have Director Curl and Director Knowles back for the full discussion.
Especially with Director Knowles being on the Audit Committee, I think it would make sense and be a little bit more respectful in the fact that Director Curler had brought the original resolution forward. I think it would make sense at this point. I don't know if you were going to put your resolution-
I'd rather work on it a little bit more, and then we'll, we'll post that along with this, unless you want to, you know, we'll, we'll get it reposted, whatever, we're going to consider one or both of them for next week. If that makes sense. Director Buell?
I'd just like to appreciate the superintendent's comments concerning this, and make sure that people understand that this is, this particular whole situation in a way is, has a great deal to do with the response of the public coming forward and saying, many, we don't understand this, and you're not being, you're not doing a good job of being accountable. And I think one of the things that I want to do is to have an audit to show that we are accountable, if we are being accountable. And if we're not, I mean, that's the whole, that's the whole point of it, and I think Superintendent Smith's comments and welcoming an audit is, is, are very good, and I appreciate them a good deal. But this is something we need to do, just because people have come forward and say, hey, hey, you're not doing, you know, you're not doing the job. Well, are we or not? Let's do it and find out. This is an important thing.
And I think, thank you, and I think the piece of, particularly of clarifying the management versus government role is really important. I think that's been a challenge frankly in a number of areas for this board, so I would like, I would welcome that on this, on this topic and in other areas as well. So, I'm suddenly questioning, since this is on the table, whether we need to do a separate vote to table it.
I think we, I think I would ask to table it until next week.
Okay.
All right, I think we need a second on that.
A second to table.
All in favor of tabling Resolution 5078 until the next meeting, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Student Representative?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a no.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. So we have-
That didn't vote in?
He did.
So he raised his finger. Okay, so I apologize, Director Blile. So, four yes and one no, and Student Representative, yes. So we are tabling this until our next meeting. Okay. So thanks again, Superintendent Smith, thanks everybody. To be continued. We now have our business agenda, we have the remainder of our business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions 5072 through 5077. And, Ms. Susan, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
No. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt it?
Move.
Director Blile moves. Is there a second? Thank you. It's getting late. Director Morton seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Susan, any public comment?
No.
Board discussion now, I just will say we have a motion 5079 that had been tabled last week, and that was in relation to appointing the members of the Audit Committee. So, what we would need to do, well, Director Regan, you and I talked about this a little bit, I think that we had a question around wanting staff to come back to the board with suggestions to clarify the policy on the Audit Committee.
Yeah, there was a couple of things that had come up in the Audit Committee where we needed to be looking at some changes to the, to the current policy. And, so we thought that we would take the opportunity to do that, and at the same time, we could then clarify whether the Audit Committee members, the community members, will be ex officio or voting members, because as I talked with our general counsel, there seems to be some ambiguity there, and when there's ambiguity, it's better to do nothing than to do something. And so the nothing would be to hold for a second, while we have an opportunity to look at the policy and to make some clarifications there. The, so going forward, what we would be doing is asking our two committee members to, community members to continue on the Audit Committee with us, and, as we clarify that, and they seem open to that.
Okay.
Great. It's been great having their voice.
So not officially vote them on yet.
Exactly. We're just, I mean, we're, we're still looking at the same two go forward, but we want to just put a hold until we clarify exactly what their voting position will be.
So clarify, not put a hold on the work of the committee, and it's, and it's moving forward, but put a hold on Resolution 5079 and that, and that piece? So, so what, the procedure we would need to follow, since we had previously tabled Resolution 509 until tonight's meeting, I first would need a motion and a second and a vote to remove it up from the agenda.
So I would, I would move that we, is it 5079?
5079.
That we move, that we remove Resolution Number 5079 from the board agenda, and look to table it indefinitely. I mean, it would just be another, probably a month or two.
To a, to a date uncertain, I think is the exact.
To a date uncertain.
And Director Morton seconds it. Any discussion? Oh, Director Buell?
Yeah, I just, I just want to be on record in saying that this resolution doesn't, it says that we need to have a revised policy, but the policy already is clear that they're not voting members, and so, I don't know.
In your opinion, but that's what they're gonna-
How you could revise that?
Yeah. That's, we're resolving differences in opinion.
Something that's already there.
In your opinion. Yep, okay. So, all those in favor, Ms. Susan, if you have a second, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion is approved five to zero with Student Representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
Yes.
Four to zero.
He didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
Oh.
I abstained.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
I'm sorry.
I didn't make it clear.
So, four to zero with Representative, Director Buell, excuse me, abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so now, having tabled to a date uncertain Resolution 5079, we will continue considering the remainder of the business agenda. Is there any board discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Director Blile?
I just want to again express how excited I am to see a couple of contracts for our summer work included through the bond. So I know that Director Atkins and I spent a little time out at Llewellyn a year or two ago, where they had many questions about staffing, but also came up some question about whether or not they were going to actually see their seismic retrofitting as part of the bond, and I just want to say that here we are approving a contract, so it's very exciting to be moving forward, as we said they would. And then Buckman and Saban Schools, so I just want to again highlight the work that we continue. This, this summer is going to be our biggest amount of work yet, and when I say our biggest amount of work, it's been great to see how many schools have enjoyed, while we've had a great winter, weather-wise, dry, dry insides, and it's been really prolonging the life. People, people have been really pleased with it, as well as the accessibility in the science lab, so it's been great.
Wonderful. All right. Ooh, pardon me. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, the business agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Jaswal voting.
Yes.
All right, so the next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, May 5th, at 6 o'clock. Thank you all so much, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you guys.